All right, I'll start again. Sorry for the repetition. Hello, everybody. I'm Barney Arnold, the Chair of the Select Board, and welcome to the Select Board meeting on Tuesday, January 17. I'm going to review the agenda and then we will come back to the community input time, and that's how we'll start. So first off is community input. Just as a reminder, during that time, you are welcome, anyone either here or on the Zoom call, are welcome to make a comment at community input time, but we do not deliberate or respond to those comments. And then followed by the appointments and resignations, then we're continuing, we're going to try to close the dog order for the dog on 480 South Street, what our amended order is going to look like. We have a presentation from the Council on Aging and Human Services, and that'll be followed by a presentation on the Housing Production Plan, which is a joint meeting with the Planning Board. And then we, we have a, our new state representative, Simon Cataldo, coming for our next Select Board meeting. So we're going to have a brief discussion about the issues, topics, we want to send him ahead of time. So he has a sense of what some of the issues are we want to discuss with him. And finally, the Town Administrators Report, Liaison Reports, Cemetery Deed Transfer Requests and Minutes, and a quick review of the warrant articles, warrants that have been signed in terms of town spending. I'm sorry, okay. Yeah, this is only for the purposes of the recording, so I, my apologies. Usually, I'm way too loud, so it's not a problem for me to be louder. Okay, so let's then open up the meetings by, if you would indicate by raising your hand, if you have a comment you'd like to make during the community input time, and if you would come, let's see, we do not have it set up, huh? So, okay, so maybe we could take, Orion, do you mind?
We need to.
Kate, we can just move this one here and this one.
And Kate's go over to that table there. Okay, thank you. Yep, so just so that it can be heard by the people that are on the Zoom call and also be part of the recording. If you want to make a comment, come up to the, sit at the chair and speak into that microphone, not, you're not, you have to speak just as loud to the audience, but that records it. And then please tell us who you are and your street, please.
My name is Paul Beftow. I am a relatively new Carlisle.
Can you sit down so you can, yeah, then they'll be able to hear you on the recording. Thank you.
Relatively new Carlisle, I bought my home a year ago. So I am part of the seven houses that they are all referring to. It's a deck house, and there was extensive discussion this morning about, with the assessors, about the process and and we understand all that, but at the end of the day, the feeling from the deck owner, which is a small segment of the population, about 8%, feeling is that they have not been, they have been targeted and they have not been fairly treated. Because when I, when my tax go up by 23%, while the revenue only go up by 2.5%, means that there is a whole segment of the population that see their tax going up just a little bit, or even some going down. So the concern is that if question is, does, does the town really cares about this segment of the population? And if the town does not care about this, them, then why should they care about the town and the people who live in the town? And my big concern is that the spirit of this town may change over time because they think they have been unfairly treated.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to comment next? Please come on up and have this, take a seat as well. And just because I, I don't know if there are people online, but just for those that might be wanting to come up and make a statement, if you could think about maybe two minutes as your sort of timeframe, that'd be great, just as we have such a full agenda. Yes, thank you. Hi.
Hi, my name is Linda Taylor. I live on Concord Road in Carlisle. I've been a resident since 1993. I really don't want to be up here today because I'm a stock person and I have a chart here of what it looks like when you follow the herd. It's usually a bad sign, and I'm here today because I feel like the Board of Health is not serving the public safety of our town. They seem to be parodying only what the big government says, and they're not doing any independent research. I'd like to point out this book to the public that there's been an epidemic of sudden deaths in 2021 and 2022, and it's very serious. COVID came along and it really targeted older peoples, and we are now pushing vaccines on younger people. A couple of people on the Board of Health have said, I'm nervous. A couple of people on the Board of Health said, we just want to get as many shots in many arms as is possible. That's not the point. The point is public health, public safety. A two-year-old little girl died in New Hampshire after getting the COVID shot and the flu shot in one day, and she was dead the next day. This is very serious. I hope it doesn't come to our town. But I guess because you're having a dangerous hearing for a dog today, I thought we need to have a dangerous hearing for this COVID vaccine, and that we should not be doing these public, spending our taxpayer money putting shots in the arms of kids when they have zero risk of death. You know, up until I'm 64 years old, up until you're like 70, you have like 99.9% chance of surviving COVID. We have not been told the truth by our government. We haven't been told the truth by our public health. They've been, so I'm just asking that we, we look at this and care for the whole community, not just pushing the agenda of the CDC. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody online that, maybe one of you that's on the Zoom call? Oh, okay. Could you, if anyone's on the Zoom call that would like to make a comment online? Mark has his hand up. All right, yes, please, Mark, and it'd be great if you could, you know, go with a two-minute limit if possible.
I think I can beat that. Let's see, timing. I do want to just follow up for informational purposes on the Board of Assessors meeting this morning. Again, we do have a situation where a small segment of homeowners who own deck houses have been affected by, you know, extreme market exuberance in the COVID period. So, yeah, there's no doubt that prices have gone up. However, what I do want to just bring to the Select Board's attention for future reference and perhaps discussion, even though assessment is outside of your purview, the fact of the matter is that the data that is in these assessors home type database misses a significant number of deck houses, which is a huge fairness issue. And it is clear, and it was admitted by the Board of Assessors, that data is not in good shape and has not been in good shape for many, many years. So it's just about accountability, it's about fairness, and it really should be something that is on the minds of the Select Board.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anyone else in the audience that would like to offer a comment during this time? Yes, please.
Thank you. My name's Gordon Chen. I live on Stony Gate. I've been there for 40, 47 years. And I'm just follow up on the, the conversation on the deck house valuation situation. It's, you know, what I pointed out in the assessors meeting this morning, and I, we understand they follow their rule, their internal rule, and the, and the state government's rule diligently. The only issue that we talk about, we, you know, in my, in my experience as a, as a professional, is the sample size that they use in reevaluate deck house. Seven, seven data point. And there are some peculiarities of those, of some of the data, but I'll talk later. The seventh data point will affect valuation, basically turn the valuation of all Carlisle properties upside down. That suggests something's wrong somewhere, is either the process or the data. The data, the seven data, there's two problems of the seven data, the numbers too small to be representative. And also, the lack of a deeper evaluation of the sum of the data. You know, there were two data, two, two houses was used in the revaluation on Stony Gate. But as, as neighbors, we know the transaction histories of those two, two properties. Those two property was transacted three, six times in the last two years. And there's one single party was involved in three transactions. You know, I'm not implying those illegal or anything hanky panky, but they are not normal. And another property involved has a 30-car garage accessory buildings equipped with hydraulic, hydraulic lift. It was, you know, was owned and built by a antique car collector. Now, we all visit that building. It's, it's like a car museum. But the transaction price probably reflect that amenities. But when you, when you, when you divide the transaction price to the original square footage of living area, you come up with a huge, huge number. You know, as the assessor has noted, in quoted by, but quoted by Carlisle mosquitoes. It looks strange because the Carlisle, you know, Stony Gate property per square foot cost is higher than pine.
Tall pines.
Tall pine neighborhood. You know, that's, that's turning the value system in Carlisle upside down. So the, you know, we all understand the, the assessor board is a small organization. You know, especially the assessor himself, Brian, is overwhelmed. And there are many, many issues with the Carlisle property database that need to be straightened out, you know? And to come up with the, you know, they were, they were to try to comfort us, you know, this is a temporary issue. In a couple of years, you're, you're in another revaluation, your value will come down. But that's, that's, that's not correct, you know, turning this, turning the price system in Carlisle home upside down every couple of years is just not correct. And one, one quick consequence is.
I do have to ask you to wrap it up early soon if you.
One of the consequences, you know, you're going to drive, you know, most of us are retired people. And you're going to drive us out of the property for the, for the 40%, 50% increase of tax. So what's going to happen? It will be reoccupied by young families. And the increase of cost on Carlisle, it would be, it would be a whole lot more than the tax you collect from us. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Yes, ma'am.
John. All I want to say is.
Introduce yourself and tell us your address.
Let's hear Shaw. All I would like to say is.
You might want to speak a little louder so everybody can hear.
I beg your pardon. All I would like to say is that while the neighbors made substantial improvements to their property to make the value go up, the rest of us are living with the 50s, 60s, whatever design, linoleum floor, et cetera. I'm sorry, but that's the case. Why should our property be bounced up in value when in fact the buyer is not going to pay us the same kind of money they paid to someone who spent 100, 200, $300,000 to make improvements in order to receive the million plus whatever they got for their home, which is not what we are going to get for our home, yet our property taxes are going up. Is that fair? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Shaw. Anyone else online on the Zoom call that wishes to make a comment? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay. Anyone else in the audience here that would like to make a comment? All right. Well, thank you to everyone that has come here tonight and offered this, their comments. And we certainly are hearing them and will do our, the work that we can do to try to address them or to to follow up. So thank you all. All right.
I would like to say, if I, if I. I just want to be clear that, you know, the, the process for the public input is it allows anybody just to come up, but it's not necessarily something that's on the agenda or, or whatever, so we don't respond to it. So our lack of response is not because we don't care. It's not because of anything other than it's just the, the, the protocol is, we don't respond to this because we don't want to get, as a whole rule, we don't respond to it. Just because we don't want to get into trouble with open meeting.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. Then we're going to move on to the appointments and resignations. And I think Chief Fong is here. Yes, hi, Chief. Welcome. Police Chief Fong.
I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to present tonight. This is a request for approval to fill a full-time police officer position, which would be changing Officer Eric Kukos's status from part-time to full-time employment with the Police Department. The Select Board previously had approved the hiring of a full-time officer for FY '23 and another for FY '24. And my hope was that we're able to cover some shortages with part-time personnel, but unfortunately, we currently have two officers that are absent due to medical leave, and we've had to resort to a lot of forced overtime to fill shifts. And so we've never gone short-handed, and coverage has always been adequate on the street. However, forced overtime can be difficult for officers, especially those with families and other obligations. So Officer Kukos has pretty much completed his training. He's gotten great reviews from his supervisors and coworkers, and we've had an opportunity to review his work performance. He's been great, a full-time appointment for him would help us fill a need that we have at this point. We've invested time, training and equipment in him, and given that there's a very competitive market for qualified officers, I think this would be a great opportunity for the department to fill a vacancy that we have right now.
All right, can I have a motion, please, and then we can discuss it.
I move to accept the recommendation of the interim Chief of Police and appoint Eric Kukos of Lowell, Massachusetts to serve as a full-time police officer with the Carlisle Police Department, subject to successful negotiations.
A second.
Second.
All right, now we can open up for discussion. Any comments or questions?
I do have one quick question. Normally, seems to me you've already done background check and all that, so we don't, so this is, so we actually are appointing him. We're not authorizing you to start the process because there was a change in.
Right, he's been working as a part-time officer.
Okay, I just wanted to double check that we were following the right procedure there. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
All right. And we just went through it with the part-time part, so I don't have any questions.
Right, right. So just for people in the audience, we, this, this is a police officer that we already went through this on when we agreed to hire him as a part-time officer. So we're just moving that to a full-time officer, as Chief Fong stated. All righty, so we can do this by voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously.
I have a question about the next motion. Debbie Bentley's letter says that the select, the candidate's name is Cap Hathaway.
So Kate, not to interrupt, but we have to hold off on this appointment. So we need to move to the next meeting for administrative reasons.
Okay, good. So next time, get the names. Actually, so they match top and bottom, that's all.
Yeah, this is the correct name listed here.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. I made a motion. I just wanted to know.
I just wondered if it's possible to make this appointment subject to the appointee verifying that she's a Carlisle resident. Because that's the issue.
I'm, I'm not comfortable saying that we can do that, given the recommendation of the town clerk.
I see. Okay, all right, then we can postpone it. That's fine.
We got a name issue, residency issue, and the fact that the ESC didn't vote in that, so.
No, they have, they have approved that this is, this is an old letter, but.
And do we know that the charter requires them to be a resident? I think we have some.
Yeah, we have lots of things where they, where they aren't.
So to be fair, this came in late this afternoon, so I just don't feel comfortable knowing what I should to give you a proper recommendation.
Let's get the right information.
All right, that's fine. All right, so we'll move ahead then to item three, which is our favorite. Let's take a look at the dog order. So just by way of a little background. So this is concerning a dangerous dog that we held a first hearing about in December of 2022. So more than a year ago, and then we reviewed, we, we had some conference. No, I'm sorry, sorry, my, I misspoke. The initial hearing was on 10/21/21. The, the hearing that we held to reopen the order that we issued then, we held on December 20th of, of this last December, 2022. And so we've already had discussion with the dog owners. We took some other comments during the hearing. At our last meeting, we had a lengthy discussion about the orders that we were considering issuing and concluded that we wanted council to prepare an amended order. And that is what we're considering tonight. So this is, the hearing on this has been closed, but we did not finalize our deliberations at the last meeting because we wanted to look at the order. So we are now looking at the proposed amendment to the dangerous dog order for this particular dog. And for the sake of the Select Board members, I think the key thing we should be looking at, it, you know, the order is, some of you have seen before, and we've done this, lists what we did and the various evidence that we took or testimony that we took. And I think the key thing for us as a board then is to take a look at the orders, which actually start on page seven.
Well, there's something on page four that we have to look at.
Since we're on page seven, under orders, one, C.
Okay, before we, before we do this, so you, you want to offer some corrections or amendments?
Page, okay, what page is it of the document? Not of your thing. What page?
I'm on page four.
On page four.
Of, of the actual order, the actual document, yes. Of the, okay, of the order itself, not the way it is in our packet. Yeah, okay, so page four.
Section orders, number one, C.
One C, yep.
That first sentence isn't complete.
Yeah, now this is a mistake on the part of council. I had actually sent the correction. Let me pull it up here.
That, that whole section's kind of awkwardly.
Yeah, so here's, unfortunately, my, I should have looked at it when she sent it back to me. She just said, great, I accept all your changes. And I just assumed she had. So that first sentence should read where it ends. The sentence says, "The home contains no single point of entry that the dog," and it should say, "may get outside." And then the second sentence, it says, "To that end, the owner shall extend the existing fencing or create another barrier," because remember, we discussed that we were not going to direct them to extend the fencing. We would.
So it says, oh, the home contains.
Okay, we're on one C.
I know where we are.
Okay, so those are the, those are two specific changes that are substantial, I would say, on one C. But can we, let's go back, though, to the orders under the first section. These are, they're the A is a significant change in that we indicated that the, when the dog is outside, if he's not attended by one of the two owners, that the dog will be humanely muzzled. And furthermore, that when the dog is outside with one of the owners, when there are other non-household members present, the dog would be humanely muzzled. So that's the A order.
And the owners are named.
Correct, and the owners are named. And there's one typo where it says last instead of least, right? But is that acceptable to us, the way that is? Okay, B is virtually the same content, but it's describing what happens when the dog is indoors.
That's correct.
But the same thing, except it says, "could be secured inside a crate or humanely muzzled at all times when non-household members are present." Is that acceptable to everybody? Okay, then.
Okay, yeah, well, but it's, it's missing the part, the part when when it's indoors and there's nobody else at home. That's the whole, this whole thing missed that whole part.
Isn't that already part of the original? Is this?
No, so you want to add a line that says, "And when the homeowners are not present, the dog is in its crate."
It's crate or muzzled, because if, if a fire broke out and the fire went in there, you've got to be prepared.
Okay, when the indoors on the premises of the owners, when non-hostile, so can you suggest an amended a sentence to add there? Or what would that, let's see, we would say, and further, if the owners are not present, the dog will be secured in its crate.
It's number, it's D. It's D. When the house is vacant, when the house is.
So you want to make this a D?
Yeah, I want to, okay, whole different thing.
So hang on, let's.
Crystal clear.
Okay, so let's get to D in just a second. So then C, the way we've, the language we've added, so the first sentence, which I already reviewed, but I could say it again, it's about, if, with, so that the there's no single point of entry that will allow the dog to get outside. And it also requires them to extend the existing fencing or create another barrier that allows for no point of of exit where the dog can get outside, basically. Or then items D would say the, when, when the dog owners are not present in the home, the dog will be secure in his crate or be humanely muzzled.
Yep.
Right? Is, is that acceptable to people? Okay, so that's item D. Then the point two is the same as it has been. Point three is the same as it has been. Point four is this, is added. So this is just putting in the order what the owners already started to do, which is to tell anybody that's coming to do work on their home. They notify, they, they tell those contractors that they have to notify the owner before they have any worker enter the property. And is that acceptable? Number four.
So these are unchanged?
No, number four is in addition.
No, but two and three are unchanged.
Correct.
Okay, I only have like.
Hang on, we got two more to go.
You don't want to comment?
I do. You're talking about number four?
Well, I'm back at just a remark because I also didn't read it closely, but as long as you're making edits in paragraph two, I mean, we use owner lowercase and owner's capital, and then their names interchangeably. She ought to clean all that.
Wait, are you and I, this one?
The premise is of the owner. It's ambiguous, and we should be consistent. As long as she's cleaning up, she should clean up.
Okay.
Have one.
You want to add an S there.
O owners, capital O.
Gotcha.
And a defined term, and then.
Okay.
And then earlier too, and now that we're into it, it should be defined so it's clear that Hookawitz, Spunkawitz, and Simak are the owners.
I, well, it does, it is defined further up there, but.
Yeah, but, yeah. I would say, yes.
But it would be helpful, right?
And then in fore end, here and after, you know. Um, and then in fore end, here and after, you know, the owner, whatever.
One of those things, right, at the beginning that says the reference to owners applies, Simic and Bukano, Bunkunovich. Okay, um. Alright.
Okay with four, I'm okay.
Okay, and so four is, uh, right, alright, so everybody's fine with four.
Yeah.
And then five, um, this is uh.
No, we didn't have that before.
We didn't have that uh, as its own separate thing, it was sort of included, so that's um, right, so that's just clarifying that, and so then order, number six says effective immediately, now.
Excuse me, did we have locks, what happened to the?
That's what I was gonna bring up.
What happened to the locks on the gates? Wait, oh shoot.
Did you do this over vacation?
So she had somebody else in the office do it.
And I think we need to be careful about how we're saying locks, right?
Yes.
Because there's, I don't, so it.
Oh, this says one of them, no, I'm sorry, it says, I'm sorry Nathan, but I'm just looking at the wording, so wording on, our day.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Um, they, the um, if we're leaving it up to them, if we're leaving it up to them as to how they're gonna deal with all the other doors, right, it's, it's a really big difference. If they are to decide they're going to put a fence around the entire house, now every single gate into that fence has to have a lock. Uh, but if they have a place where they let the dog out in the back, and that's a separate fenced area, then they can just lock that, and I just, I just think it's, it's important to understand which one they're going to do, right, so if uh, I think it increases the risk if they put a fence around the entire house and people are coming and going through that gate versus, you know, like being uh, just, you know, prescriptive about, hey, you have your backyard, that's where you let your dog out, that's where you put the locks, but we also want you to prevent, in order to be able to prevent the dog from bolting out of the house, we want you to put a second barrier for the dog, but that's not to be incorporated into, we're letting the dog out space.
Okay.
Right, because it detracts from the, if it doesn't have a lock.
Exactly.
Okay, so that, so we're gonna need to rework that.
Yeah.
We don't really, okay, so um, let's continue through this, but I think my recommendation will be that we send it back for one more, uh, even though it means it's delayed in getting out to the owners.
Yeah.
Um, we send it back for one more revision, alright, um, so that would be a, I guess, under that section then Nathan, which is one A, there'd be some further language about um, no, no. That talks about the fencing.
Have to reword.
Yeah, so it would be C that needs some uh, additional wording about um,
They can't.
Gates and locks and security. Right.
Fenced area with these other.
Which is why I didn't want them to say extend the fence to begin with.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, and then uh, let's see. Uh, yeah, everything, we gone through the others, and then failures comply, this is by order, this is based on the statute. The, you know, below the number six, the thing, the consequences.
Yeah.
That's just by statute, and then um, these bolded, the bolded comments in the, on the next page are added by us in this letter, right, to make it clear that euthanasia is um, uh, the, uh, we're observing the right to further amend this order, and it could include euthanasia, regardless of whether or not the owners are in compliance or non-compliance with the provisions of the order.
Well, it'll probably, and if it were, if there were another biting incident, it would probably be because it was not compliance, but obviously, we can't think of every single instance, eventuality, so it's gonna, it's on them. Make sure that, that they think everything through and forward.
Right, alright, so uh, um, then I will, uh, let's table your, wait, we didn't make a motion on this.
No, we didn't.
Okay, so um, that's clear then, Ryan, right, we're gonna go back with these changes, and I, and I'll communicate with Jenny on the, our town council on that. Okay, and so that'll mean our meeting on the thirty-first, we'll have to add a little uh, time for this one. So what I will try, no, what I will try to do is make sure we get from town council the changes well in advance, so we, everybody here can take a look at it.
That would be nice.
Get it cleaned up if necessary, before we actually are gonna vote on it on the thirty-first, okay, thank you all. Alright, so let's move on, um.
So do we think that the changes that we're looking for are substantive enough that we couldn't approve it pending those changes?
I, I want to see the language.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's what I was thinking about too.
Think they're doing the vocal, yes.
Well, I just drove by today, it's a drive-by that way, and there's nothing in the front, you know, nothing.
I can tell.
No, I, I.
Need to do it through this.
I think it has to be done through this, and I would.
It's okay.
I understand, but I would really like it to be written correctly.
Yeah, right.
Before I send it.
Okay.
I think unfortunately, I agree with that, so um, alright, um, let's move on then to um, welcome our um, council on aging and human services. Both our director and some of the board members, I don't know if you all want to pull up chairs or um, how you want to do this, but please come on up to the table and um, welcome, and we um, we've set aside a good chunk of time for this, and I know you have lots of here and there, so uh, let's get into it, it's, we're a little bit late, uh, but we will give you your full, full time. Um, and I, for those in the audience, I wonder um, if we can turn around the um, this one presentation, so folks that are here in person can see it. Thank you very much. Alright, because we have it in our packets. Okay. Okay, thanks to Joan. Alright, welcome uh, the director of our council on aging and human services.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to present. I have it right here.
I know, you need to see what's on the screen.
Okay.
Joan, do you need to open your board meeting? Is it a joint meeting?
Okay, so, and I appreciate the members of the board that came to this presentation, and also for all the help, because it was really a collaborative um, effort to respond to the request, which included a summary of our goals and our charter and how the board works. And so this, this is how I understood the assignment. So the first thing was, what is our existing charter, so you see that on the screen. As we changed our name, we talked about what we wanted to do to um, mod- modify the charter, so the second slide um, was the proposed, which just adds some language, which is in red, um, that just reworks the language to talk about active aging and to include people um, under sixty as well, so residents of any age. So we just thought that that better reflected what we're actually doing. Um, so I don't know, it doesn't seem to be controversial, but if anyone has any questions or comments, that was the only change in the charter.
That was ratified actually by the town meeting, so.
Well, the red language was new.
Yeah, so um, question, do we need to approve this? Is it the council on aging? Yeah, we'll go through the whole thing, but I'm just, the point of order is, or clarification, is this something?
The select board has to.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay, we'll come back, I don't know if you're aware of that, but, so we'll come back to that, um, but yeah, thanks Joan. Thanks for putting it in red, so we can clearly see what's being proposed.
Right, um, the mission and purpose or things, um, our language that we developed when we do our strategic planning process, um, were it towards the, just the last quarter of our two-year strategic plan. So this is the mission and the purpose that we have been operating under, just for context. Uh, you requested a list of board members, their terms, um, and whether they were full members, associates. So that's the next slide. I did get a question about um, why do we have associate members? Associate members don't have voting rights, um, we use the associate membership for people who may be interested in learning more about serving on the board and want to try it out for one year without, you know, being a voting member. And also for people whose terms have been completed, but they want to stay engaged, so they can be an associate member for one year, and then they could be reelected to the board. So. You can see the terms are staggered, um. So if there's no questions, I can just keep going. So, you know, to frame the conversation, which is really gonna be focused on space needs and how we can best serve, you know, the growing senior population, um, Carlisle's population of seniors is now thirty point six, and that is exceeding um, what it is in Massachusetts. That was a question that I got from David, so you know, in twenty-ten, um, Massachusetts had nineteen point four residents, sixty plus, Carlisle had twenty point five, so that's only a one percent difference. In twenty-twenty, Massachusetts had twenty-three point two residents, sixty plus, Carlisle had thirty-one point three. So now we're up to an eight percent difference, and projected twenty-thirty is a nine percent difference. So twenty-six percent of Massachusetts will be sixty plus, thirty-five percent of Carlisle. So you can see that we're tracking, you know, substantially different, and the gap is, is widening. So, you know, we have sixteen, sixteen hundred and seventy-five residents, and thirty of them are, thirty percent of them are sixty plus. Um, we, thirty percent of that.
Households, sixteen hundred must be households.
We have more than sixty.
Oh, sorry, 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 households, yes, yes, and thirty percent of the population is um, no, sixteen hundred and seventy-five residents are sixty and older in Carlisle, which represents thirty percent of the population.
Okay, ah, gotcha.
Yes, as the slide says, yes, um, we served about eight hundred of them in twenty-twenty-two. And David wanted to know, what do I mean by unduplicated, well, we have a lot of um, regulars, you know, so the same people are coming to exercise and mahjong and receiving meals on wheels and going to support groups week after week after week, and our database tracks all those contacts. So we might have had eleven thousand contacts, but we were serving about eight hundred people, just to give you, you know, a framework for, for what our, our reach is.
To say another way, about half the seniors touch COAHS.
Right, right, and it was more during the, you know, acute pandemic, because we were contacting like almost everybody in a blast. But this is more, you know, we see them, we talk with them, it's not just an email, so, alright.
And you think that um, twenty-twenty-two's, that year, last year, should be fairly representative of what you see going forward? Well, if. Thinking about COVID and.
Yes, I mean, if everything stayed the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that some people aren't gonna go back to the level of congregate, you know, gathering that they did before, so I think some, some changes may be long-term. So this was um, a graph on the senior population, just so you can see how it's been going up. I mean, there was a spike a couple of years ago, um, in twenty-twenty, but other than that, twenty-twenty-two is the, the highest percentage, so that's just, you know.
That's really interesting about that, and I'm, I'm the last person that should talk about anything statistical or math. But um, not only is the percentage going up, but the numbers going up, so that means it's, it's an even larger increase.
Right, and you know, we know seniors don't want to leave Carlisle, I mean, they really don't. You know, they don't want to go to assisted living, they don't want to move to a condo out of town, you know, that just seems to be, this is where they want to stay. So, you know, that's, speaks to the town, but also sort of informs some of our goals and objectives. Um, my screen doesn't have this anymore, no.
This is connecting to Zoom.
It's okay, I can just do my thing, um. So, you know, we want to address, so by way of introduction, we're trying to address, what is it that makes it difficult for some people to remain in Carlisle? And, you know, we don't have that commercial center, the, the BD center, you know, restaurants, and I mean, we have ferns, which is great, but we don't have the gathering focus that some other towns do. And so certainly in the pandemic, um, and even before and after, some people who live by themselves are lonely, they're isolated, you know, it really impacts them, they're far from their neighbors. So having a range of programs and services will give them security, community connection and enrichment. And that's, you know, mostly what we wanted to talk about, and what the board agreed we should really be prioritizing. So while we have eight goals that I've listed that can be directly tied to the master plan, I've prioritized them because I didn't want to run out of time by talking about the less controversial or, you know, interesting goals. Um, so clearly, space limitations have been requiring us to juggle programs and services, and makes it harder for us to offer, you know, hot food, and, you know, to, to do counseling and to give people sort of private space. I mean, there's so many things that other communities are able to do that we can't do. And so, you know, getting dedicated space where people could just drop in, if they get up in the morning and they don't have anything on their calendar, they could come to, you know, this space, and there would be coffee, and there would be muffins, and there would be staff, and maybe there'd be other people there. I mean, that's how it was when I worked in Lincoln, when we had the Old Town Hall, and it was great. I mean, they didn't, they wanted a community center, but, you know, and everybody always wants what they don't have. But where I was sitting, I could see it in action, and we had plenty of space to do all those things, and people would come for no reason. Whereas here, I'm very grateful for the Clark Room, but people come at ten thirty, because that's when their classes, they come for mahjong, they come for, you know, it's not like organic, like I'm lonely, I just want to see who's around, like you might do at a general store or something, so, okay. Um, in addition to, you know, that goal, other things that we're gonna be talking about is housing, affordable housing, the property tax burden and transportation. So, goal one is advocating for space upgrades and resources so that we can have functional, accessible areas, you know, for all of our programs and activities. Um, and to, to do something, propose something realistic, both short and long-term, that prioritize the needs of seniors, because we're aware that there's a lot of competing needs in Carlisle, we understand about public safety, you know, so we don't want to get lost in the shuffle, and we want to make sure that whatever um, plan starts to move forward, there's some recognition of the needs of the seniors. And so, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean a multimillion-dollar community center, you know, we want something that's um, doable in the next couple of years, not, you know, something that sounds good, but maybe isn't gonna happen, so. Um, and that, you know, ties to the master plan recommendation, and so, you know, we've been talking about um, how we can integrate into a plan, that's maybe um, John Valentine is saying that maybe there's discussion about a Conan Town Campus, and that could we get integrated into that in some way with the parking and the, you know, whatever that would entail. Um, fortunately, we have members of our board who are on, you know, the facilities committee, you know, different building committees, and that's extremely helpful. So, you know, it's obviously our goal to provide educational, cultural, social, you know, all kinds of opportunities for seniors. Um, and this room has been a great addition, and we appreciate the support that we can use this room a lot, most of the time during the day. Um, and we were able to upgrade it, and so, you know, we just want to sort of take that to the next step. And so the board wanted me to put together a matrix of all the programs we have, where we have them, you know, what the kind of space needs are. You know, for reference, this room is eight hundred and twenty-five square feet, which I know because I was in charge of the flooring, and so it had to be measured. Um, but you can see this kitchen is not, you know, suitable to, to serve a hot meal. And, you know, the space isn't really big enough to have, you know, some of our um, group lunches could have maybe, you know, sixty people, I mean, I think it used to be eighty, right, Ferna? But, you know, we haven't seen more than fifty or sixty, and you can't fit that many people in this room. Um, so this is good for men's breakfast, women's breakfast, things like that, but it, it just has limitations. Um, so, you know, that we've been using the fire station, we've been using the, you know, the, the three churches, ferns, I mean, kind of anything we can get our hands on, but that also, you know, doesn't always work for people. We get feedback, you know, from certain people when, you know, the pastor says the, the prayer at the beginning of lunch, some people will say, I, that, I'm not, you know, there's always something, whereas I feel like when we do things here in town hall, it just seems like um, it's easier to make everybody happy, you know, it's not tied to one group or another. Um, so, you know, in looking at what I thought we needed, um, it's about three thousand square feet, and I broke it out into a multipurpose room, a full-size kitchen, a meeting room for support groups, a private counseling office, and staff offices that would, you know, right now, we have to have um, people only working in the office, except for me, three days a week, because we can't have everybody there at once, because it's too noisy and it's too chaotic, and people can't get their work done. And so, you know, that's fine, but it would be really nice if we had enough space that, you know, we could make that work in a different way. Um, and, you know, I noticed that Harvard um, re- And you know, I noticed that Harvard recently renovated a building of five thousand square feet and they're about the same size as we are and that's worked really well for them, the town of Harvard. So. No, I mean, any solution that would give us something around that amount, I think would make a big difference and a big impact. Because no matter what we do, every senior isn't going to a gate, you know, the, the COAHS wants to be available to everyone and wants to help everyone, but you know, not everybody engages with their council on aging and human services. You know, I think we've done a lot to get more newer seniors to come in and people that have never engaged with us before. But it's, I don't think, even if we had the perfect community center, all six hundred and seventy five seniors would not be coming in. That's just not how it works in, in this business.
Ask a quick question. What's the difference between goal one and goal two?
There was not that much difference.
Goal two seems to support goal one of wanting more space or.
True, one of them focused more on the programs, I think. You know, like, I was encouraged to be more specific about, you know, providing programs is kind of our core business. So we wanted to just make sure that there was a goal that explicitly said, you know, we're always trying to provide a range of programs, but yes, that's.
Mean that some things, I mean, could some things in goal to be accomplished without more space because it's talking about programs or?
Yes, well, I mean, we're doing some of those things now without more space and we're doing some things on Zoom. So yes, we, we are providing all these things. I would argue that we could provide more depth and breadth and impact with space. But yes, I would say they're related goals. So then, you know, I just listed other goals that tie to the master plan because I felt like that's what you were asking of us. So, you know, working with the assessor on property tax exemption for seniors, we can see from today that, you know, there's a lot of concerned people and a lot of concerned seniors about, you know, how they're going to pay their.
So you don't have to wait around for later in the agenda, but I know you put in a comment about things that you'd like to discuss with Simon Cataldo when he comes in, in two weeks. And one of those, you referenced a bill. Can you briefly describe the difference between that and our current tax relief?
I think the bill that I was talking about, Kate knows about this. It was a bill where the state would come behind the, the, the exemptions that the towns would do. So that if we granted certain exemptions to seniors based on whatever criteria, the state would then reimburse the town. So that's like a huge deal.
Yeah.
And so I wanted to know like, what's, what's up with that? Like, that would be a game changer.
That is something that MGL has been discussing, but not.
They have in the past and, yeah. And I've been, every time I see any of our legislators, I always bring it up, but.
So, uh, related, but not the same question. Do we have a statutory? I know that last year we changed the terms a little bit, right?
Well, that's different. What, what we did last year was change when they defer taxes. I'm not talking about deferrals now. We, we changed the interest rate and the eligibility. I'm talking about people like getting exempt. And other surrounding towns, you know, Concord, Sudbury, a number of towns have created programs for the neediest seniors. And that's allowed them to take off, you know, one, two, three thousand dollars from their tax bill and not owe it. It's how, doesn't go against their estate.
Is that under, maybe it's a, is that under the purview of the town?
There's a local option to design the program, but the state legislature must approve it.
Each towns.
Yes, individually. So we would have to submit a bill for Carlisle. They, we have, there's tons of bills for all the other towns. And so the assessor and I have been talking about, you know, what are the levers going to be? Like, how would we figure that out? So, but we're working on that and I think that's an important thing. And I've gotten a lot of feedback from seniors about that or the idea of freezing taxes at a certain age, but I hadn't gone down that road. I was going more down the exemption road. And then I know we're going to have a presentation on housing, you know, after this. But one of our goals has been to try to figure out how to reduce the cost burden for seniors. And especially the seniors at Benfields because it's not the same type of affordable housing community as Village Court. You don't just pay thirty percent of your income. It's, and it's been difficult for people to keep up with the rent. So we were able to develop a rental assistance program. That's, you know, one of the ways that we've made a big difference. And then we're exploring home sharing because we know there's just a lot of people that they can't afford their house and they're lonely and they have needs that aren't getting met. And other communities have been successful in trying to match people and do something with that. And so we want to look more into, would that work for people and what kind of agreements do you have and how do you get that off the ground? So.
That's a great idea, by the way, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you had the right match, it could work really well. So. And so transportation is something where we had an actual monetary ask that I presented to the finance committee. And that is because we have all three vehicles now that we control. We don't have flow transportation. We're doing medical rides to Boston, two hundred rides a month. And we are using leftover special appropriation money to pay the drivers this year because Kelly saw that we had it, which, you know, from old social worker funds, but that's going to be gone by June thirtieth. And so I calculated out, you know, basically how much we would need to keep services the same next year. And that's ten thousand six hundred and fifty four dollars. So I've already requested that for FinCom, but it would be great if I could get support from the select board for that because we don't want to, right now, we pretty much accommodate any requests we get for transportation from a senior or person with disabilities. We rarely, you know, unless they call us up at, you know, nine o'clock and say, you know, they have to be in Boston at ten thirty. But you know, we really don't say no, even if we have to, you know, get volunteers or whatever. And we would like to keep it like that. And that's also a way a lot of new people come to us. We have like the gateways, the medical equipment shed is a gateway, transportation is a gateway. Oddly, mahjong appears to be a gateway, but.
And so what transportation option did we lose?
So we had a contract with something called Flow Transportation, which was like a livery service down in Lemonster. And they would buy vouchers from us and they, they would take trips, flow would take, transport people. And then they would pay for the voucher and then flow would bill us. And so after my first year or year and a half, I started to kind of question whether that made sense.
And so ten thousand dollars is, that's an in, in, increase over what we were paying, paying flow in order to backfill it.
No, no, it's just that our drivers are now working more hours. So I want to get the driver salaries into the budget because they're doing more driving before, you know.
You're paying flow.
We're not paying flow the balance, right, of the, for the rides because they charged, they charged more than the vouchers, you know, cost. So residents were getting a break and we were playing the balance.
And that's, that's calculated into.
It's factored in, yes, yes. But residents now can go to Boston for a medical appointment for thirty dollars round trip, which is cheaper than flow was. And you know, they're doing that about once a week. So it's not a huge thing. But when we have someone going to Boston, we have to put another driver on for all the other rides because that ride takes up most of the day. Because the driver waits for them to be done with their appointment that brings them home. So. So then I just talked about mental health, which is something that we were working on in the strategic plan. And we got an ARPA grant to do some mental health counseling virtually. And Carol, the social worker is doing caregiver bereavement groups. And we've been expanding friendly visitor and respite programs. So we're really trying to make sure that we know and are engaged with people that have unmet needs. Because that's both of our orientation and, you know, people aren't. You have to build a relationship with someone to really know what's going on with them. And so we love all the, the fun enrichment add-on programs. But there are people that are really suffering and those are the people that, you know, we've been working on, on figuring out how to better help them. So that's a goal. And then, you know, fiscal sustainability, I mean, even though the COAHS wasn't mentioned in that master plan goal as a, you know, stakeholder. We have been trying to do that. I mean, we have gotten, you know, of course, we get the Community Chest Grant, but I've applied for an additional Community Chest Grant. You know, we have the Friends Grants, which has been hugely helpful. And we did get a big increase from the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, mostly because of, not because of what, anything we did, just because the census went up so much that we got a fifty percent increase in our state allocation, which was awesome. So, yeah. And then, you know, in terms of like, updating manuals and making sure that there's institutional knowledge, we're all responsible for doing manuals so that anybody that needed to step into one of our roles would at least have a, a starting point, which would be helpful. You know, this is when this happens, this is when that happens, you know, so that you're not just like, we, what's the annual report and when does that do, you know, it's like. So. So that's really just a summary of what we're doing and how it relates to the master plan. And I do, we do want to say that we feel very supported. We feel like everything that we've asked for pretty much has been well received in terms of all the ARPA grants, the medical equipment shed, changing our name, you know, reorganizing the staff. I mean, that's, and that's been really great because I feel like it's helped us deliver better services and serve the seniors better. And so as a new person, it was really excellent to feel like, you know, people were listening and, and open to things. And it wasn't just like, no, you can't do that. And so we're really appreciative, appreciative of that and hope that we can find, you know, a good way to move forward with the things that we're requesting.
Thank you, Joan. The great presentation and very clear. Also, I, I think you get an A plus for actually following the, the four points that we were asking to hear.
That is who I am to my core.
Yeah, I mean. And to the, the board as well.
And they were hugely helpful. We had two separate meetings where we went over it and we revised it. So it was really a collaborative process and I got a lot of good feedback and great support because they're all Carlisle residents. They're all, they've been here a long time, you know, so it was really a good exercise, I think, for, for us.
Yeah. Other comments, questions?
I just want to echo, you know, really crisp, nice presentation and you're doing a lot. I mean, a lot of the goals you're just bootstrapping on your own with your staff. And your staff is great. You know, I've gotten to know the board a little more and I appreciate it. So, and I just want to comment for us. We need to vote the charter and do we need to vote? What do we do on the request that just gets passed the FinCom?
Yeah, they're deliberating.
The ten thousand, yeah, that's already in, right. That's already been.
So our only action tonight or if it's a subject.
That's correct.
Well, is it a bylaw? Is it a, it looked like it was in the form of a bylaw. So if it's a, if the charter is in the bylaw, we need to put it on the warrant, vote to put it on the warrant to present it. So.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that either.
Because it, it doesn't look like our regular charter when it had, you know.
It looks like a section of the Bible.
It does, so.
Three point two, three, et cetera.
So, so.
So we'll, we'll take the assignment or the town administrator will take the assignment to figure out how we would include these changes. Yeah, but it may have to go to town meeting.
But we could take a vote to say that those changes are accepted.
Yeah, we could do that tonight.
Yeah.
People comfortable doing that? Because let's.
Propose changing section three point two point three, if it is a bylaw, Council on Aging and Human Services. Section three point two, three point one, as presented tonight.
Second. Any discussion?
I just had a question. I know it says sixty and older. Is that statutory? I mean, how, how did that get established or does anyone know? I was just curious.
I think the Executive Office of Elder Affairs defines seniors like as sixty and older. So in other words, the money that we get is for sixty and older. So I think it's E O E A.
Coming up, Snow.
I know, well.
Somebody, here he comes.
Get this before social security.
Okay, all right. If there are no other questions, let's do this by voice vote, please. All those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, this carries unanimously and we will follow up to figure out how to make the change official. Joan, I do want to ask you about, or, or just note that the really significant piece of this obviously is the space needs. And at the end of your, before you do the, under the goal number two, you know, you say, support the proposal to create the new, create new COAHS space within the Conan Town Campus. Do you have more you want? We have a few more minutes, given you're a lot of time. We're running a little bit late for those that are here for the joint planning board, select board meeting. But we're, we're getting, you're starting at eight twenty, so we do have a few more minutes. That was, yeah, what are your, what's your thinking about?
Valentine suggested that, that I phrase it that way.
Okay.
You know, but I think that the idea is just that whatever is going to be done in a public safety context, you know, there could be capacity for another three thousand square feet somewhere in that mix. And we wanted to have that. That, you know, yes, there has to be some parking. Yes, you know, I mean, he had this whole, you know, idea. I don't know the, the land well enough and the spaces well enough to talk about exactly what it is. But just kind of that we would be part of the thinking in terms of some, whatever new development occurs.
Okay.
I think that's what we try to task our committee to think about as well.
Right.
As it originally.
Right. And yeah, so, and that's what you put in on, as a possible solution under your space request. Right, the same idea, something.
Right.
Yeah, of it being included in that. Okay. I just, I just wanted to point that out for all of us.
But it's, it's really support evaluation and including three thousand square feet for these purposes in anything we may do. Not really a Conan Town Campus.
Right.
It isn't that.
It's TBD, but I agree. I think, you know, my advice to Joan was, don't be too prescriptive. You described the need, which she's done very well, and she's done a good job, or the board, COAHS has done a good job in coming up with defining space needs, you know, pretty concrete specifically. And then it's kind of in our lap and we are having discussions with the other boards and thinking about a more holistic view of all those needs. And so I appreciate, I certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Joan, and thank you to the board of the.
Gee, and I was going to propose a tent on the patio, so.
All right, excellent. Well, we've got a few minutes and I don't know even that all of the planning board is here yet. So I'm wondering if we can skip ahead, yeah, because we've got ten minutes till the time. Why don't we do the cemetery de transfers and then look at the minutes briefly? So that would be. Alright. Page one of way.
I got it.
In the packet.
I moved the select board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground at the Green Cemetery, described in deed number seven ninety four as lot D, section three thirty six, grave number three to David E. Sanderson, Seventy Forest Park Drive, Carlisle, Mass.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Do we have the D?
Yeah, it's right below it. Oh, no, not the act. Well, no, we don't.
Okay.
We'll probably do it.
We'll have to do that at the sign. Next meeting, I guess, I think, yeah. All right, let's take a look at the minutes. We have the three sets of minutes. We may want to just take them one at a time. So we have December thirteenth, December twentieth and January third.
In that order.
First in the packet is January third, so it sort of goes backwards. Any comments about the January three minutes?
I sent something to Jen.
Was it substantive or, or more edited?
I'm trying to remember now because I don't seem to see my notes on this one. That's probably, hang on. Seeing notes on any of the other ones. No, all my notes disappeared. Okay. I don't know why. There was, I don't think that one was the substantive one. The one that was substantive was where.
One of the other.
One of the other ones where they had Nathan voting aye for something he voted nay for.
So should we go ahead then? Are people comfortable voting on the January three minutes to?
I, I had another change and we talked.
January three?
January three, on the police chief search committee or screening committee. There was a comment in here, the select board agreed to amend the second paragraph to, and in an understanding and supportive for Carlisle's master plan, including environmental sustainability as it relates to the police department. We certainly talked about it, but that was not the language we agreed to.
Yeah, and, and the other thing that we talked about, so yet now I'm remembering, was that there was a missed, the incorrect information in the job description of. the incorrect information in the job description of um, how many staff were in the police department and that was going to get fixed and that should be noted in the minutes. So if anybody's reading the job description in the minutes, they understand that that was not correct information. So I, so, and I did send all these things to Jen.
Yeah, and she mentioned to me that she had, you're right, this, this job description still has the incorrect information about the
Yeah.
Number of staff. So she, yeah, Jen mentioned me this afternoon. There were a few changes. Um, I don't know, do we feel comfortable amending this without seeing the, I mean, accepting it with the amendments we're discussing?
It's the most recent one. I would think we can even hold off this one.
And go back.
It's also presented twice, but somehow.
I have him, I have it three times.
Three times.
Like different things are in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was totally confused.
Oh, gosh, okay.
So let's, let's, let's not do those.
Let's start over.
Um, well, no, we can do the other ones, but not January three.
Okay, for sure. So let's take a look at um, the one in um, we have December thirteenth, which is page one twenty, if you're looking at your packet.
Um, yeah, see, I, I did give something, you know what? We can't do those either because I gave her something substantive that everybody should read.
I'm sorry.
I, I said on the next one, this December.
Thirteen?
Thirteenth. Um, no, sorry, December twentieth. Is the next one.
Well, I have December, did I miss one?
Yeah, you missed the twentieth.
December thirteen. December twentieth.
Um.
It's, December twentieth is in between.
Yeah, so. Yeah, no, Kate, at least in the packet, it goes to January three, then it goes to December twenty.
And then keep going back.
And then it uh,
And then December thirteenth. Right, so I'm in the December twentieth ones.
You would like to hold off on doing that?
I'm trying to remember, yeah. Because uh, there was stuff again about um, the hearing and what was said about how we wanted the, uh, oh no, sorry. I wish I had my notes.
Well, why don't we just hold off on all three of these? Um, so.
Isn't it in the last one, which is, it shows that I'm voting aye for the
That's.
Voting machine and I didn't.
I got you. Yes, and I sent that to Jen.
All right, so what I, I'd like to ask of each of us though, if you, if you haven't looked these closely, or if you have a, a correction uh, to make sure you send it to Jen, if you would, and if you think you already did.
I know I did.
But um, I don't know if you included everything that.
No, I didn't include what.
Corrections about the um, police chief.
I, I didn't send them.
Okay.
I sent you the.
How does that work profoundly?
Yeah, how, how, how do you want to do it?
Because then, then we're approving something that we actually haven't read because it wasn't in the packet.
No, no, I'm not saying to approve.
No, 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 I'm saying in general, if, if we're sending in our comments ahead of time.
Yeah.
And then those are, are gathered that we don't have time to review them before we're voting on them that night. Unless that.
Right.
After we get a red line, so we know what changed, so we don't have to read everything.
Right, the goal would be, I guess, right on on Thursday or Friday, when we get the packet and we see the minutes in it, we should send in our changes and then get, I guess, me and Ryan, you can work out with Jen, how is she gonna get back, you know, revised minutes to us prior to when we need to vote on?
No, or she can send the minutes out earlier.
They have to go out. I think it would be even better if the minutes went out the same week that we had the meeting. So if we have a meeting on Tuesday, we get the minutes that Thursday.
Well, that.
We have a week to give it, we get it.
That's a resource, you know, question. I mean, Jen's doing a lot of other things.
We could just stagger them, right? We could be voting this week on the, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So we put, you know, we provide our input and then.
Yes. Right, I don't know, Brian, do you want to speak to this or?
It's similar to the policy, so I would recommend that you get a draft, review it and comment in one packet and then the next packet you voted, probably make it simplest.
Probably, I mean, can we get them in Word?
I was gonna say.
Mark Text Guy and its PDF is such a pain.
That's why I don't in fact have my notes, because I put them in PDF.
Jen's gotta edit on each one of those that comes in.
Right.
Just the.
Can make one person responsible.
Or could you do it as a um, Google Doc or something like that?
Yeah.
You can't do that, no. No, there's not.
I mean, that's the thing, you get, you know, you could do workflow. If you do it early enough, you can do it in sequence, right? You can do that, but it's not efficient. If, if we get it as a Word document and, you know, track changes is on, and when she gets it, she'll see what we changed.
Well, how about we leave this to Ryan to figure out with Jen?
And then Jen can figure it out.
And that the goal would be that we have the ability to send in changes, corrections, whatever uh, in advance and then getting a final version that we have enough time to look at in order to vote on them at the meeting, at the, at the appropriate select board meeting, right?
Yeah, the only challenge with your SharePoint, and I'm still stuck on that, is that if everybody's kind of in there working on the same thing at the same, you know, you're gonna have, so you almost need one person like Jen who just says, okay, I've taken the comments and I'm gonna use my judgment to.
That's, I don't think we can do that, because that would be deliberate, deliberating, right?
Yeah, exactly, we can't.
Value to do is to download the same document.
Uh-huh.
And then provide.
To read all of them.
And then she could edit.
Yeah. Oh, you can't edit?
We can prevent you.
I, I don't know, like, that's a good point about it. I think you're off the simple harder way, the safe way.
But let's let them figure out the way to do this.
Well, those are how I'm all considerations.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll think about that, I'm sure. Okay, so these we're gonna set aside for now.
Word.
And we'll. Well, then.
Download your own Word doc.
Yeah, all right, we'll come back then. Next, next meeting, uh, we'll hope to have the uh, final revised versions of these. Um, all right, so I think we're about.
Minutes brought us all the way up to eight twenty.
Okay, so um, let me check, let's see.
Everybody's here.
I see Madeline. See Addie here. Hi, Addie. Um, who else is in the room?
Bernie.
Planning board? Hi. Good, good to see you. Yeah, hi. All right, and then online, um.
We have Mad- Madeline Blake.
Who's the co-chair.
Um, we have M A P C here.
And that's um, hold on a minute, so that's um, Alex Koppelman, right, Alex? Welcome, thank you for being here.
And Mark Rassaport.
And Mark is also from M A P C.
From M A P C.
Hello, Mark.
Um, we have um, the, the Housing Trust um, is also having a, a meeting, has a post a meeting.
Okay, so hang on one sec, let's just do the planning for, for the moment. Do you have a, a quorum there, Madeline? Did you wanna formally open your meeting?
Um, I'm, I, I couldn't quite hear you. I'm trying to see who's in the room. I think I heard Addie and Court are in person and Sarah and I are online, so we would have a quorum. Court, since you're there in person, do you want to go ahead and open us up? I, Court is, Court is my co-chair this year.
Excellent.
You get a microphone.
Court, you should come up then and be able to, yeah, the, just because the mic allows it to be part of the recording for the meeting. Yeah, thank you, Court.
Okay, uh, thanks for putting me on the spot here, Madeline. I appreciate it. Um, anyway, so, so uh, we, uh, I would like to hereby open uh, this meeting of the planning board as a uh, co-meeting with the select board.
And is there a second? So Addie Grady is the seconded, um.
And uh, going around the table, uh, all in favor, uh, we can go ahead. Madeline?
Blake, aye.
Adam's aye.
Hershel man aye.
Grady, aye.
Mathi, aye.
Hawk.
Hawks aye.
Oh, actually Gina, you're uh, not on the planning board, so this is the, for the planning board.
Sorry.
And so I'll hereby declare this uh, meeting of the planning board is now in session.
Great, thank you, welcome.
I'm going to open the uh, Carlisle uh, um, Affordable Trust uh, meeting. Um, we have here, um, Gina Fox. Let me see, who else do I have here? Uh, Mark Levitan, uh, Christine Johnson, Beverly Shory, and Brian Waterson.
So do you want to put a motion on or have a motion?
Um, I'm opening the uh, Carlisle Affordable House, um. Yeah, do we have a motion to, well, I, I'm just gonna, opening it. I'm just opening it and I've already um, told you who's on. And I see, by the way, Peter Yells, did you get him on your, in your roll call? He's here, I see him on the.
Okay, great, thank.
Okay.
And Eric's here too.
All right, well, welcome everybody from the planning board and from the Housing Trust. This is a really uh, exciting and uh, you know, powerful group we have here. Um, so Kate, I'm gonna turn it over to you to.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, take us through this with.
So, and as I said, we have uh, two members from the M A P C and we also have um, the H P P Advisory Committee here, and that was Addie. Uh, it's too bad, uh, Joan was here. I was hoping she would stay. Um, so just Addie, I think you're the only one that was on the advisory.
I'm here, Kate, it's Maureen.
Oh, sorry, Maureen, uh, Maureen, uh, dear. Okay, so, um, but before I introduce the housing plan per se, I'd like to review a little bit of its background. Um, first, it is um, an outgrowth of the Carlisle Master Plan. And I don't want to misrepresent the master plan, um, because of all the goals of the master plan. Uh, the goal of increasing housing options received probably the least support. But it did receive fifty-two percent of support, so not um, insignificant, but just not the most. Um, however, that's still a large um, percentage of people, and I will tell you that housing, specifically housing choice, I think is going to be key to Carlisle's future health and its vibrancy. Um, so the first uh, master plan recommendation around housing was to develop and implement a strategic, strategic plan for the Affordable Housing Trust, can't talk with this on, that includes implementing a public education program about fair housing and affordable housing and consistently maintaining an up-to-date housing production plan. Check. This plan does exactly that. The second was to explore strategies to promote housing diversity and allow development of missing middle housing in specified areas. And I think this plan does that as well. The third was to consider other opportunities produced housing as outlined in the H P P. And that's going to be everybody's job. Um, it's going to be um, select boards to adopt and support um, the plan, the hap, and the, and the planning boards to consider and offer zoning modifications and the towns to ratify any bylaw changes that come out of that. The fourth was to reorganize staff to support housing-related initiatives. It should be pointed out that normally the work of an H P P is done with a staff planner. And uh, the H P P that we're about to present is an incredible body of work, and I'd really like to give kudos to the um, advisory committee for getting it done without any town staff support um, being available. The fifth recommendation in the master plan was to annually designate Community Preservation Act funds for use by the Affordable Housing Trust, which is not, I don't think strictly related to the H P P, so I'm not going to tie the H P P to that. So Carlisle contracted with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, what we familiarly call the M A P C, to provide technical assistance to develop a housing production plan that was funded by the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust and a state grant. It was a year-long planning process guided by nine member advisory committee, and they represented a number of town boards and committees in town, including, we had uh, representatives from the planning board, Addie over there, select board, um, Bernie, you were select board liaison for that. COA, uh, that was Joan, school committee. Public input was gathered through public forums, focus groups, interviews, and committee meetings. And um, I'd like to just set a couple of ground rules during, for this presentation, so the length, we have a lengthy report and fairly lengthy. So if you could hold your questions to the end of the, of uh, Alex's presentation, I'd really appreciate it. I'd like to keep our discussion tonight and our focus on the big picture and the high level of policy. And this is not to say that we want to address specific comments on data and technical zoning issues, but I don't think we'll have the time tonight. Um, and many of those issues would be more appropriately addressed, I think, during the implementation of the plan. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Alex Koppelman, the Senior Regional Land Use and Housing Planner, who helped shepherd this report, and Mark Rassacourt, the Director of Land Use Department at M A P C.
Thank you, Kate.
Can you let um, Alex share his screen or you, are you going to run through his?
I think I've got it up now.
Okay, there you go, okay.
Did everybody see that?
Uh, not yet, there we go.
Should we turn it around? Yeah.
Thanks, Addie, sure.
Yeah. We're getting there. That was another part of the, the master plan.
Okay, all right.
All right, uh, thank you, Kate, and, and all the board members who are with us tonight. I think it's an incredible opportunity to have members of the select board, members of the planning board, members of the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Production Plan Committee all in the same room to have this uh, discussion about expanding housing choice and opportunities for the Carlisle community and I'm gonna give a presentation of the plan that um, was worked on through the uh, Housing Production Plan Committee, and um, it is going to be dense with a lot of information. I expect you to have lots of questions. And I'm gonna do my best to summarize uh, the planned findings and recommendations so we can have a good discussion. Um, but I hope that you can hold your questions for the end. Uh, so for those who aren't familiar, uh, the Metropolitan Area Planning Councils, the regional planning agency for greater Boston, so we provide technical assistance for planning and land use for a hundred and one cities and towns in the region. And you can see that Carlisle is part of the uh, Minuteman Advisory Group Interlocal Coordination uh, subregion, which is a group of communities uh, that meet regularly and work towards regional collaboration. So the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust um, asked us to assist them with the development of a housing production plan as a result of a recommendation in Carlisle's master plan. And uh, as you can see here on this map, M A P C has worked with many communities throughout the region um, in producing their housing production plans. Here are some of those recommendations from the master plan that correspond to the H P P that Kate mentioned earlier. Uh, since she's already listed them, I won't list them again. I first just want to say that having the opportunity to work as a, a consultant for the town on this really allowed me to appreciate the unique and characteristics of, of Carlisle. Um, it is really a beautiful community that has many um, wonderful green open spaces and views. And uh, the residents that we talked through, to throughout this planning process clearly value um, the small town feel of Carlisle, uh, the recreational opportunities. Um, so I just want to say that I really appreciate that, and I did get an opportunity to visit Carlisle a few times, and it is a truly a wonderful town. Um, these green assets also make it really difficult to think about how to expand housing choice in Carlisle. Um, as it's noted in the master plan, roughly thirty-five percent of the town is protected open space. Wetlands impact uh, many um, properties throughout town. And um, it's also a town that does not have any wastewater or sewer infrastructures. I'm sure you're all aware, and these things um, you know, are very challenging constraints that we analyzed and considered closely uh, throughout the planning process and tried to gear our recommendations to find pathways um, despite these challenges and working through them, uh, to find pathways to expand housing options in town. So as Kate mentioned, this planning process was stewarded by uh, Housing Protection Plan Advisory Committee that represents um, several sectors of the town, including a representative um, from the planning board, which is Adelaide Grady, and a representative from the Carlisle Select Board, which is Barney Arnold, um, representatives from the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust, the Council on Aging, uh, Joan, who gave a great presentation earlier that I think pertains to a lot of housing needs, especially for seniors um, and other uh, areas of town. This committee uh, met five times over the course of about a year, and they were also instrumental in um, gathering public input from the community by promoting uh, two public forums that were townwide forums advertised in the Carlisle Mosquito, uh, and also helping to arrange a focus group to really. ground truth some of the things that we were looking at in our data analysis to really see how housing challenges and issues affect the Carlisle community. And we also had an interview with the Carlisle Board of Health to inform our development constraints analysis. So before we get into the plan, I think it is beneficial to just discuss a couple housing terms and concepts so that we have a shared understanding and vocabulary as we work through this. As a housing planner, one of the things I'm asked all the time is what is affordable housing? And what I say is that when a house and housing costs in general, including your utilities, when that costs more than thirty percent of your income, that would make it difficult for you to pay for other necessities like food, healthcare, transportation. You have less money to contribute into the local economy as well because your finances are so leveraged by housing costs. And that's considered cost burden, which is actually a metric that the Census Bureau and HUD use to collect data to understand how many people are struggling with housing costs. If you're spending more than half of your income on housing, that's considered extremely cost burden. And so the U S Census Bureau and HUD collect that data on who's cost burden, extremely cost burden. When we're talking about affordable housing, it can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people, and I think it's helpful to think about it in terms of lowercase a, affordable housing, and uppercase a, affordable housing. Lowercase a is housing that tends to be costing no more than thirty percent of your income in the marketplace. And those are usually homes that are smaller, or when you have a greater variety of homes, there's a greater chance that you'll find these kind of naturally occurring affordable opportunities. You know, for instance, it's going to be more attainable to purchase a condo than a large single-family home because a condo is generally going to cost less than a large single-family home. But there's no protections on this housing, it can change with the market. And because greater Boston is such an expensive area, it's really important to also be thinking about uppercase affordable housing as well. So this is housing that's required to cost no more than thirty percent of your income from a deed restriction. It is built by nonprofit and for-profit developers through a variety of financial and regulatory means. So we can think about lowercase a or lowercase attainable housing, and then we can think about the uppercase A affordable housing. Uppercase A affordable housing is for income-eligible households only. Eligible households are determined based on area median income. The area median income for greater Boston in twenty twenty-one is a hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred dollars. If a household is earning eighty percent of that, they're eligible for affordable housing. This figure varies by household size, depending on whether you're an individual household, two, three, or four-person household. But generally speaking, let's say, an individual household would be eligible for affordable housing if they had an income around seventy thousand dollars, which is a pretty substantial income. I mean, we could be thinking about a teacher, a nurse, an architect, folks that make a pretty good amount of money. But because housing costs are so high in greater Boston, a lot of those folks can end up being eligible for affordable housing, which is why a lot of people in communities can be surprised about how many households in town are eligible for affordable housing. So I think that's a helpful grounding point so that we can understand some of the things that we're looking at throughout this report. And so with that, I'm going to get into some key takeaways from the housing needs assessment. This is a comprehensive housing needs assessment that included lots of different sources of data. I cannot possibly go through it all with you tonight, so I'm going to do my best to highlight some of the big takeaways. But I do want to make note that when you're working in a small community like Carlisle where the population size is lower and you're working with American Community Survey data, which is really the best data to describe a variety of different things going on in the community, it is based on sample size, it is an estimate, and there is a margin of error, and margin of error increases when you have smaller sample sizes. So this was a limitation of the data, which I think you would encounter in any planning process in Carlisle, including the master plan process. But to try and increase confidence in the findings, we use data aggregation and that helped us confirm some of the trends. And this is the best information that we have to describe what's going on in the community. So key finding one is looking at the average household size in Carlisle. One of the parts of the analysis was to establish context communities based on communities that had similar characteristics and demographics and housing that we could use as a reference point to see what's significant in Carlisle. And so you can see on the chart on the left that Carlisle has the smallest household size of all the context communities at about two-point-seven, the average household size is about close to three people. But ninety-four percent of homes in Carlisle have three or more bedrooms, so you see a little bit of a mismatch here in terms of size of households in town and the size of housing units in town. So this is a quote from a focus group that I think speaks to you know, a small family having trouble finding a smaller home because there's just not a lot of that in town. So the next key finding is limited housing choice. Ninety-two percent of homes in Carlisle are detached single-family homes. The twenty-twenty-two median price of a single-family in Carlisle was one-point-three million dollars. We know when the pandemic happened and interest rates were really low, that there was a huge increase in housing prices, but even if you look at twenty nineteen data, you can see that Carlisle had the most expensive median single-family home price of all context communities. So why, why do we want to think about that? Why is that a concern? Well, if you think about some of the different needs in town and people who want to have different choices, there's not as many because ninety-two percent of the homes are single-family. And the median price of a single-family home is one-point-three million dollars. So if you're a senior and your kids have grown up and you're an empty master now, maybe you've retired or transitioned to a fixed income, and you may be looking for a smaller housing type that's more manageable, but you can still stay in the community, live with autonomy, and you want to downsize. Well, ninety-two percent of homes in town are detached single-family houses. This is also an issue when you're thinking about, let's say, you're a kid who grew up in Carlisle. You've fallen in love with your community, you want to buy your first home in town. Ninety-two percent of the homes are detached single-family houses. You would need two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in savings for a twenty percent down payment. Twenty percent is required to not have to pay for private mortgage insurance, which is additional monthly expense. So again, when you consider that ninety-two percent of homes in town are like this, there is just a limited range of housing choices and that that down payment is required to access the vast majority of the housing stock, so it's a really big barrier to entry for a lot of people. This is a focus group quote from a senior who talks about they don't feel that they could find a downsizing option in town and may need to look elsewhere or modify their existing home so that it can meet their needs as they age. The third key finding concerns uppercase A affordable housing. Remember that housing that's for income-eligible households is required to cost no more than thirty percent of your income. There are approximately three-hundred-and-sixty income-eligible households in Carlisle. There are only fifty-nine affordable housing units on a town's S H I. The state law is really asking communities across Massachusetts to be at a ten percent S H I. Carlisle is at three-point-four. There are a lot of reasons for that. A lot of the development constraints that we've been talking about go into that. But I think what is most important is to not think about the S H I or forty B, but to think about where is the need? And clearly, there are a lot of households in town that are eligible for affordable housing, and there is not a large supply of it. So here is one last focus group quote, talking about how that affects community. So development constraints and opportunities, understanding that there is housing need in Carlisle, we still know it's really challenging to create more housing choices because of all of the constraints on development. So through this planning process, we did a robust analysis of development constraints, looking at environmental constraints spatially, as you can get a sense of on this map. Looking at the town's zoning regulations, having a discussion with the Board of Health about wastewater and sewer infrastructure constraints. We gathered several case studies with communities that also have a limited waiter, water and wastewater infrastructure to see how they worked through those challenges. And we also evaluated the town's existing toolkit and capacity. So from that constraints analysis and the input that we've been gathering through the plan, we did a very high-level opportunity analysis. This is not specific to any properties, it simply categorizes different types of parcels based on characteristics like their size, occupancy, and ownership and location. And so, for example, one of the opportunity types, site type two, would be large vacant sites located outside the town center. This is a categorization. We're not talking about specific properties. At the second public forum, we had discussions and polled participants to see what types of homes that they would favor on this opportunity type. Participants really showed support for a range of different housing options. And for site type two, cluster cottage housing was very popular. So using this analysis, the committee with its local knowledge and understanding of different development possibilities listed four specific sites, which is a requirement of a housing production plan to be certified by the state. These sites are identified in the plan, but whatever happens there is completely up to the private property owner. They are all site type two, which again are those large sites outside the town center. They have, they are all seventeen acres or more, some of them are larger, which also I think offers some more flexibility considering the development constraints concerning water and wastewater infrastructure. All right, so moving into goals and strategies. The H P P committee established five broad goals for the housing production plan. The first, the really need to create community awareness of housing needs and how it affects Carlisle's community because a lot of the action that needs to be taken requires better awareness of this to produce that capital A affordable housing, as well as creating a variety of housing options, that lowercase a or attainable housing. Number four, to affirmally further fair housing, to create housing opportunities for all protected classes. And then five, to expand and leverage infrastructure for smart growth, recognizing that that's going to be needed to expand housing options in town. So from those goals, we created, we proposed different strategies that would work towards those goals, really carefully considering the many development constraints and the recommendations of the Carlisle master plan. The first strategy that would be more suited for the town to pursue is to adopt a new cluster cottage housing zoning bylaw. And again, as I mentioned, this was one of the most popular housing types from the polling we did at the forum. And this would be something where, as the town explores implementation, it could decide where this would make sense. So rather than making a cross-the-board change to zoning, like changing the two-acre minimum requirement, this would be a target approach consistent with the Carlisle master plan to identify specific areas to create more housing options. And this is actually something that we proposed after conversations with the planning board, which revealed that this would be a more effective bylaw to go work towards rather than looking at making more flexibility, creating more flexibility in the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, which was originally proposed. The second is to build on the progress of the new R O S C and S R O S C permitting processes by working with a consultant to create affordability requirements that would require a portion of housing units coming through those processes to be affordable and carefully balancing those requirements with financial feasibility. So we believe it is necessary to work with a consultant because a pro forma analysis would need to be done to really make sure that these requirements are set thoughtfully and appropriately. The third is to look at a vision for the town center, which would be driven by public engagement, asking residents what they would like to see there, as this may be an opportunity to look at creating mixed-use housing combined with some smaller commercial uses to possibly create a gathering place in town. And this corresponds to a master plan recommendation to have a mixed-use commercial zoning study to look at opportunities that may exist, and it identifies the town center as one of those areas that may be looked at. But ultimately, whatever would happen there, I think, needs to be driven by the public's vision and further engagement. So that is the recommendation. The fourth one is to make a plan to look at complying with the new state law, chapter three A. This is a new state law that is requiring all cities and towns served by public transit or adjacent to public transit to have a zoning district that allows multifamily. It must be by right, but the town can, sorry about that. It must be all right by right, but the town can set its own standards for how how that would be regulated. Initially, when this law was drafted, the state was requiring a community like Carlisle to zone for seven-hundred-and-fifty multifamily units, and the H P P committee as well as planners working on this felt like that that was not going to be possible for Carlisle. But then the state created new guidelines that classified communities differently, and Carlisle was classified as a small-town adjacent community, and the requirement was reduced to ninety-five units, and Carlisle would not have to locate that zone in a specific location, but could choose where it would go. And so when we're talking about planning to comply with three A, we're talking about another planning process to see where that three-day zone may go. Maybe it's more than one zone. And to get public input on that and to engage all the entities in town that need to be involved in that process. Currently, Carlisle could submit a simple form to the state indicating that they are looking at planning to comply, and that would give the town one year of compliance without binding the town to doing anything to actually, you know, they could actually look at implementation later and end up not adopting a three A zone, but by submitting a plan to do that, which could reference this housing production plan, Carlisle would already have a year of compliance. Compliance is really hard, is really important. Sorry, I have a little animation problem with my slides. But Carlisle, this is really important because one of the recommendations is to prepare a Mass Works application, which is a state funding program that provides funding for water and sewer upgrades. You have to comply with three A to be eligible for that program. So that that is one of the reasons why the committee ultimately included this as a recommendation. So the other strategies that are more under the purview of the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust, there are six of them. The first is to utilize the LIP comprehensive permitting process and other state tools to facilitate mixed-income and affordable housing development in opportunity areas. And this is really necessary because, under current zoning conditions, there's not really an ability to permit a variety of housing types. So the second recommendation is to, for the trust, to form partnerships with developers and meet with developers on a regular basis to proactively plan and identify development opportunities that the town could support. Again, these are being thought about because we recognized how much development constraints and challenges there are in town. But to actually be able to work with developers to do that, the town would need to use the comprehensive permitting process. So those recommendations are really tied together as well. The third recommendation is related, I believe. This one is to establish a joint commission that would involve the Carlisle Conservation Commission, the Conservation Preservation Committee, excuse me, as well as other entities, the Select Board, the Planning Board, so that all of the boards could think together when the town is. so that all of the boards could think together when the town is uh considering acquiring sites um and 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 to take ownership of those sites so that there can be a conversation about whether it's possible uh to have some housing and shared open space on sites rather than it just being acquired uh for housing required just um to be preserved. This is basically to have more coordination um to think about those things in advance, which is also correlating to a Carlisle uh master plan recommendation. The fourth strategy um is then to work with those development partners from strategy two to um in advance, identify a development opportunity where the town in partnership with the developer could submit for a mass works uh funding application, which could provide um infrastructure that would be necessary to um have a development in Carlisle considering those severe uh constraints with no townwide wastewater sewer infrastructure. This could be done um in coordination with looking at public land or possibly an easement where or possibly connecting into an existing wastewater treatment facility. Um, but in any case, a master's application really needs to be done in in advance. And so that's why it's necessary to have those partnerships with developers and to really proactively identify development opportunities and have a process for permitting that development that the town would have control over would be that lit process. Um, one more point about the lit process is that if you use it, you get state technical assistance uh which can really help with a lot of the complexities to development um in Carlisle. So the last two, uh, the, the strategy five is to join a shared housing service office. Um, and this is something that the trust has already been exploring and working a little bit with a a housing service consultant. Um, but essentially this is a really cost effective way to increase capacity, which I believe is really important for implementing these recommendations. Uh, you're able to basically utilize a shared uh planner and they'd be shared by multiple communities uh based on demand and how it changes each year, which would allow the town to monitor um affordable housing units to make sure they don't expire. And if uh more fa- affordable housing units come online, uh, this, this staff person could handle the administrative needs that come with that. And they can also um increase capacity for planning and implementation. The final recommendation is really building off of something that the, the trust has also um been dabbling in and that is to offer housing assistance programs specifically to have a first time home buying program. I mean, we remember, you know, how hard it can be for someone to buy a, a home in Carlisle. Uh, and so it may be about more than just creating more housing options, but also offering some assistance and leveraging state funding that that does already exist for that, as well as offering assistance for seniors who may have trouble affording their home or may need to make modifications to their home so that they can age in place. So I'm almost done, I promise. I just want to end with a couple benefits um to go back to what Kate was talking about um in terms of considering this plan. I mean, first and foremost, this plan is, is a, as a roadmap for the community to look at meeting housing need. It is a way to proactively plan for development rather than having unplanned uh forty Bs that put pressure on the Z B A, but to actually identify what the town wants, use the, the, the permitting process with, with the town um in the driver's seat. This plan can also help Carlisle comply with forty Bs so that there aren't proposed unplanned forty Bs where you could basically say no, because you have safe harbor from forty B and you don't have to get ten percent on the S H I to do that. If you adopt the plan, uh, you could have a two year safe harbor period if you added seventeen units to the S H I. If you added just nine units to the S H I in one calendar year, you would have one year of safe harbor. So there is a way to get safe harbor uh without going all the way to the ten percent. And then finally, if these um recommendations are implemented, this can really help protect Carlisle's access to state funding, like things like mass works and other discretionary funds that are really critical for Carlisle, considering that it, it needs um water and wastewater infrastructure. And you know, this is um something that I think can, can really help Carlisle access uh state funding. And with that, I'm going to um conclude my presentation and open it up for questions and discussion.
There's a lot.
Thank you, Alex.
There's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot here, but it's great. Um, and I know the full H P P report has even more in it. Um, Kate, do you wanna sort of share questions and comments?
Sure, sure. Uh, let me. Uh, you wanna stop sharing maybe so I can see the uh, the, thanks. So if people uh that are online want to raise their hands, I'd be happy to recognize you and people obviously in the room. If if they're on the one of the boards, yes. Well, why don't we start with the select board?
I mean, so there's so much and it's gonna take a while to sift through. Um, but maybe I'll ask you, Kate, cause you're the closest to it. What? What do you, uh, what do you feel the objective, what's a reasonable? We understand, I mean, very thorough job of explaining why it's so difficult. So we got that. And that there's few properties. And then there's a lot here that's new to me about ways we can, you know, address that. But I always like to start like, what is the objective? What do we think is the objective? What should be our objective? Like a house a year like we talked about years ago or?
Yeah, I think.
Cluster, I mean, what is it?
Let me put it to you this way, there's no way Carlo is gonna do nine houses in a year or seventeen in two years. This I don't see that happening. Okay. Uh, so that is not the objective. But um it's not the immediate adj- objective, but you never know, uh, forty B could come in and give you those. You know? Um, so part of the reason that we do this is to also protect ourselves from that, because you know, you get um, because you planned, you know, you know what you want and you know where you want to put it. Uh, you can fend yourself, you know, defend yourself better. Um. I think that objective is almost not even, you know, I've heard now somebody told me, well, you know, the new term is not affordable housing. Uh, you know, we, we talked about big A and little A, okay? I would say that Carlisle is more interested in with the little A housing, but we don't even have that. And another term for little A housing is attainable. We don't have housing that's attainable for most people. You know, you have to better be double income family or, you know, and, and both pulling in, you know, one and a quarter, right? Thousand, hundred thousand uh dollars to be able to afford anything and that's not attainable for most people. So I think we're looking, I think the master plan was asking for that missing middle, that attainability. And you have to plan for that. It's not gonna happen by itself.
Right, but that's the, back to the, wha- what do you think is reasonable for Carlisle? There's still a lot of people that are missing me like what, what scale are you talking about? Like, again, one house a year of?
I, I would say one house, let's say, let's take Woodward Village for a good example, I think. First of all, they're having a real tough problem with their wastewater treatment. And there's, I think there's sewage in, in um Bedford, just across, you know, the way from them. So with a mass works grant, they could have maybe even applied for mass works. But regardless, um, there's thirty-six acres of open space that they protected there with their cluster, which is great. But thirty-five, if they had saved thirty-five uh acres, it would have been just as great. And one acre could have been then donated to the trust to then either partner with the developer or partner with somebody else to put an appropriate house or ha- two units on that land, because that's what that's what we need. And that would not have cost anybody anything in town. But we would have gotten one or two units of affordable affordable of some sort of definition, housing out of that. So it's, I'm trying to get people to think of open space and housing. It's not open space or housing. It's both, you can have both, especially if you cluster the housing. And um yeah, I don't know what else.
That addresses the land piece, right? Can you just walk us briefly through how the the, like habitat or some other partnership that would actually build the house? And then you make it available to them.
Um. What, I'm sorry.
Well, so that's a very good comment you made that we could balance our open space with some warehouse. So that would take care of obtaining land.
Right.
But then the building of it.
Well, then we have to work with the builder and we have to put an R F P and, you know, um, and we get a, and that way, in fact, then we can also um, control what is it gonna look like, where is it gonna be sited and all this other stuff, because it's our land and we're donating it and we're, you know, that's what allows them then to build something affordable. And it could even be, as I said, it could even be the, the same developer who is building anyway.
Yeah, maybe weird to have two different ones, right? So I think, so I used to just like for the Woodward thing, the, the pre, you know, cause we did talk to them. You know, well, what if some of those were affordable and you know, how much money could we give? And it was just, it was way too much money. Um, you're saying if it was uh, you know, they get their, their number of lots, but then we say, okay, so here's another buildable lot or two. You can do this project if you provide housing on those properties or are, are, are we coming in and saying, okay, here's the property somebody else builds? Cause that would kind of, I would think it would want to be done as part of the development of the overall cluster.
That would be the nicest, but you know, there have been clusters that have been done um and s- yeah, depending on the style of the cluster, you know, uh, but uh, and then they put a couple prefab houses in, in the neighborhood. And you, the prefab houses are really much less expensive. And they look just like any other house in the neighborhood, but they've been prefabs, so so the finishes on the inside aren't the same and this, that and the other, but you, if you're driving through the neighborhood, you cannot tell the affordable houses. Can't pick them out.
And so is that are you suggesting that like the, the cluster option here is really a modification of what was developed a few years ago for the, what, you know, for Woodward property?
Right. Yeah. I mean, basically, in fact, the, the um what was it called? The recommendation is to build on what we already have, which is the S R O S C and the R O S C to kind of think a little differently about it. Yes.
Alright, that makes sense to me.
Uh, to Mark Levitana's virtual hand raised. You wanna recognize him?
Hey, Mark. Wonder.
That is me. Hi, uh, Mark Levitan, uh, Forable Housing Trust. Um. The, the, this, you know, is a roadmap for sure. There's, you know, a lot of data, there's a lot of information. You have to keep circling back to where are we and what do we have as tools for us to break the impasse of not being able to have any quote unquote attainable housing, which I do believe is a better word, um, in the middle. But also the fact that the economics such as they are in terms of their immediate income and working folks um, mean that we really, you know, have to take into account and build some capacity. We have to do it, whether it's a house a year, which is really, you know, to my mind is a little bit modest um, or just a few, but even if we were to look at zoning options to allow a small home cluster around a common with some buffered uh conservation land around it, that the town decides where we can do that. And you know, that, that is, you know, opening the gates to our our uh, not technically gated, but just about gated community here. We uh, you know, have to be a- alert to who lives here now and their contributions to the community. And who could possibly live here and their contributions to the community and uh, terms of different kinds of diversity, economic and other. So you know, this is just a package of tools. But we have to have a sort of mindset that we want to try to implement some of them and not keep finding reasons that we can't or we shouldn't, or it might uh damage, you know, what we all consider the beauty and the character of the town. It, it, it's really unlikely anybody would let that happen. And it's not uh restricting us from making progress though. And again, these, the, so this is a package of tools. Let's look at it as that. Let's realize that anything that could possibly come out of using these tools would require a very extensive amount of conversation, study, uh, economic planning and uh, and land use planning before anything could happen, but we really have to get off the dime. It's, it, you know, you can tell what's going on already uh just by the unfortunate coincidence of uh, you know, the property tax situation that's making our town uh, less affordable, although the values have increased and that's all well and good, but that is really hurting a lot of people. And you know, we don't have any solutions, so I'm gonna finish up, but it's a detriment to our community which is a social compact more than it is, you know, driven by market forces. And that is how our whole government and communities are organized. It's the social compact, what makes up a community and what contributes to its health.
So I, I think a great place to start is I think when we did the S R O S C and the R O S C, we had hoped that this was going to help address that problem in some way and that they're massively expensive properties. And I think looking back at those is a good starting point as to, okay, what went wrong? You know, why, why was it not affordable for anybody to put uh, you know, uh, alternative housing um in there and, you know, like talk to those developers and figure out what, what we can change in that in order to make it happen.
Yeah, Eddie, I wanna, um, just wait, no, you have to come over here uh, or maybe trade spots.
Nathan, if I might, I don't, you know, I don't want to relitigate that whole thing, but um you build it into the bylaw that it has to, you know, it's a trade off. There's a density bonus for conservation and there can be similarly one for housing. And you know, the whole element of inclusionary zoning, which, you know, we have de- decided on many occasions not to try to either raise you know, a housing unit or two in a development of multiple homes or get some cash for the pleasure of not building those. Because a lot of these things we're talking about are gonna take money, even, you know, home buyer assistance, rental assistance, all these things, anyway. Build it into the bylaw.
Let Abby have it.
I, I didn't inten- I don't intend to speak at length. Addie Grady, Adelaide Grady, uh, I'm on the planning board and I was uh, on the advisory committee. Thank you. Um, I would suggest in response to why hasn't alternative housing taken hold where it can, based on the existing zoning that we have or bylaws that we have, has almost more to do with the era of low interest rates than anything else. If it's easy to sell a really expensive home and just build one of them, and I'm speaking from the perspective of I'm, I'm a housing developer, you will build this easy single family home and sell it. But as interest rates go up, people have less and less ability to pay three million dollars for a new construction home. And if developers are good at anything, it's adapting. And they will find a way to make money given constraints. And high interest rates are a constraint. That's all.
And it doesn't look like, at least in the near term, that's gonna we're, we're going in the direction of lowering them for a while, a while.
It will, I would I would suggest that it's not going to go down as far as it was for a generation.
Yeah.
But at the same time, Eddie, doesn't it make the attainability? I mean, it makes it harder for developers to sell, et cetera, but it also raises the level at which a house, it's raising all the real estate values, right? So.
No, it lowers the real estate values.
Higher interest rates and then go down, housing prices.
Hey, Manny.
Okay, fair enough.
Come on, mute. What are you doing? What are you doing? You hungry?
I'm sorry, was it, it's speaking?
I got it. I got it. I handled it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else? We, we, um. We're close out of, we really are out of time, but I, I know we haven't. Had a lot of chance for other comments. Anybody else from the planning board? Madeline, did you want to make a comment?
I just want to really quickly take this opportunity to introduce our new planner, Julie Mercier. Julie, I can't see if you're in the room there. But I assume that you are. Um, I think a lot of you have had a chance to meet Julie. She started about a month ago. Um, but she has extensive experience working with housing. Um, and I believe in interest in being involved in the area too, so. Um, I hope everyone gives her a welcome and that she can be, become involved in this area and help us.
Here, here.
This is Eric Adams. Um, one, one additional thought that, that I have, um, or it's kind of as a builder myself as well. Um, as we start as a, as a society, but also as a municipality. Our state of Massachusetts and municipality Carlisle, start thinking about and talking seriously about, um, the evolution of the building code and. Um, housing, uh, performance requirements that are going to be changing dramatically over the next decade. Um, I think that there's something for us to consider in the context of this. Of this topic is, um, the cost to construct housing. In that manner, is it going to be more expensive, at least in the short term? Um, as these new building, uh, requirements are, are mandated on, on developers and builders. Um, but I also think there's an opportunity for us to. If kind of thoughtfully incorporating, um, this new technology and these new requirements in such a way that. Um, I could see cluster housing, um, that has other performance based criteria. Uh, being. Kind of incentivizing builders, um, with perhaps greater density or, um. Some other factor whereby we can incent the development of greater density of housing that meets higher performance standards. And therefore, um, I, I don't see. Um, I, I tell clients this all, the, the, the most influential factor in the cost of a housing unit is the number of square feet that are constructed. Um, and I don't see that changing, so I think that if we have, um. Performance based criteria, density, um, uh, considerations and. Um, making the, the more of an incentive for smaller homes as was, uh, demonstrated in, in the, um, presentation. Um, I, I think that might be something, those things kind of, I think are kind of elegantly connected. Um, and something that we as a town and as, as, you know, people who are. Charged with this mandate to think about should, should incorporate those things, um. Into this, how we're, how we're thinking about these, the, the options moving forward.
Eric, could you clarify what you mean by performance standards or give an example?
So, um, uh, thermal performance of the shell of the building itself, um. And basically energy efficiency, so, um, decreasing the number of. Units of energy required to heat and cool the house, um, as well as potentially generating, um. Electricity through the use of photovoltaics, um, and storage of, of electricity through batteries. Um, still, still probably having a grid connection, um. Um, but, um, thinking about energy consumption in a different way and really getting away from fossil fuels. I think there's also going to be a growing. Um, incentives from the state and federal government to subsidize those, those technologies. Um, and, um. And then you, there's, there's other things as well, you know, water, water consumption efficiency and, and other things like that, but. Um, I'm, I'm talking primarily about, um, uh, the, the. Basically the amount of energy that it takes to heat and cool a structure. Um, and the amount of energy that those structures could potentially generate onsite. Um, whether it be, you know, um, a. On the structure itself, or if we're talking about cluster, a cluster development, for example. Um, uh, someone mentioned, you know, allocating one of those thirty five acres to, or you know, multiple, multiple. Um, lots for development of those types of housing. Um, we could all, I think we should also start thinking about allocation of common areas for. Um, ground based solar arrays, um, that could be much larger, um. Than what you might be able to put on just the single roof, especially. Here's an inverse relationship, obviously, by the, between the size of the house you're building, the amount of power you can generate from, from a, a roof based, um, photovoltaic array, so. Um, just again, um, things that are, that are creeping into my, my business. Um, and I think worthy of, of thinking about as we really need, I think, I think our mandate. In these bodies is to think, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years ahead and that, that's all really on our doorstep at this point.
So how does this, I, I know we need to end and I'm supposed to be paying attention to that too, but I just have to ask, how do you? See this moving forward?
Well, um. The report needs to be adopted by both the select board and the planning board. That's the first step and then, um, we start talking about these ideas that, uh, Eric, uh, brought up and, um. Uh, we get to work, um, but we, you know, it would be really nice to get this out of the way first. Um, and then, you know, develop those ideas. There's no, no. You know, prescription in, in this report about which idea needs to be worked on first or whatever. It just says. Planning board, housing authority, or housing, uh, trust, uh, conservation commission should get to work and. Talk about what the possibilities are and here are some of the, you know, ways to, you know, here's. Yeah, how to start.
So the, the, um, the ask of the select board is to adopt this plan.
And on the planning board, it has to be adapted by both the planning and the select board.
Say, or, or make some changes, requests or recommend some changes or.
You could actually, uh, you know, vote to adopt it contingent on making the following changes or.
And is the process, the planning board does the same thing, so does it make sense to do them sort of one after the other? So the second group of voting on it can be informed by the first group?
Uh, I mean, everybody's here. Would be lovely to just do it.
To vote on it. So I mean, I read through it and then the presentation was awesome. And it's made me think more about some of the things in here and I'd love to be able to go back and read the sections again.
Right.
Personally, it's, it's a lot to.
No, I'm, I'm with you on that. That's my, that was my understanding about tonight. It was a presentation.
Well, that's fine, you know, but then we do need to make.
Right, have it on.
Progress.
On that note, I mean, should deliberation be among those boards together or seriously?
I think what could happen is people could, um, send in their, um. Their notes and concerns or questions and, or we could have another. You know, meeting where they could be met. There's all kinds of ways of, you know.
Handling that's the, I was just going to ask, what's the feeling of the planning board about this where you have sort of more? At least from my vantage point, you have more specific, um. You know, responsibilities, areas that you have much more involvement in, have actually monitoring or managing or changing.
Well, I think I, I personally am kind of in the same place where we, we had the benefit of this great presentation. There's a lot of, uh, data and a lot of information here. I'd like to go back and reread the report, digest it a little bit further, and I think that the planning board does need to go back and discuss it as a board. Uh, we, as, uh, pointed out, uh, Julie is now with us who has experience in this area, who could also bring that experience and. Uh, to the board, uh, for the benefit of our discussion and then I think. Once we've had that and endorsed the plan as a board and, and had a chance to provide any feedback or comments or, uh, recommendations or updates. That would be the time to come back and, and ask that we adopt the report after we've had a chance to fully review it. Now, that, that's, that's my opinion. I haven't had the benefit of the, I guess we are in, um. In, in the meeting here, so I should, um. See if I should, uh, see if there's a movement to, um, review the. Uh, plan in a board meeting and then come back at a later time with our, our recommendations to adopt or not.
Court, I agree with that. I was putting up my hand to ask that we not vote tonight and that we have some more time, um, with this report. Um, and I, I know you guys had some public forums and I, it sounds like there was a great amount of outreach during the process. But I think we would really all benefit if you could post this on a webpage somewhere and make it available to the public so that. Excuse me, we have the benefit of any public comments on it as well.
That can be arranged.
So, if I can make a comment, I, this, I, I certainly have no, the plan is very thorough and, and I can't argue with the conclusion. But it's, it strikes me a little bit like the master plan. So if I go to action steps, there's like fifty things. I mean, they're, they're grouped and it's organized, but there's a lot of things and. We've been sort of wrestling with that. Julie's been pretty active in that lately is, um. Uh, trying to. Organize those many, many recommendations, all of which have merit into some sort of structure. That makes it actionable. So I, I'm not here, obviously we don't have time tonight, but I think my guidance or my suggestion to all the boards is. And I don't know how to do it, maybe Julie can help us, but we, we really need. Assuming we pass it in whatever modifications we make, the next step is what do you implement? What's implementable and in what sort of sequence and, and we as a select board took on. Adopting essentially the. Framework of the master plan in our own goal set, so we used it extensively. In setting our goals and we have to kind of do the same thing here. We have to figure out which of these things really are going to be action steps.
Every one thing of those things is an action step under the master plan.
No, no, I know. Okay, there's lots of them.
Prioritize and spread it out over timeline. Yeah, Addie.
Yeah, thank you.
Just to be devil's advocate. I wonder what will change about the plan based on the feedback and the more extensive review. Versus how feedback and more extensive review will inform implementation.
Hmm, yeah, that's, I agree.
And I am concerned that taking time for everybody to review and everybody to comment. I understand this is a public process and. We're, we're a volunteer body. But I'm just concerned that we'll lose momentum. The flip side is. If we have the time and we set a deadline. And that instigates people actually reading it and actually digesting it, then there's a benefit to that too.
Yeah, I, I have to say, everybody's had this report since November thirtieth. I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, it was, it was sent to everybody on November thirtieth.
I'm sure.
Yes.
If I may, so, um, I think the, the board has a. Has an advisory committee, they've Affordable Housing Trust, and I think. Just in my outside analysis, what, what they're lacking is the, the direction and empowerment to act. So what this plan does is it gives them that. So I think if there was agreement, which, which would be difficult between the select board and, and the planning board on. What to advise them to do, then they can go do the work. I think what is really needed is that, is that direction. I, I think that's doable with some focused effort. And we can serve, uh, Julie and I as a, as a clearinghouse for ideas to bring back immediate feedback from the group for. For that decision to try and, to try and speed that up if the planning board goes and then. We collect notes, we can gather it together and, and try and help inform that discussion and then maybe power the C H D to do the work.
I'll just say for myself on the select board, um. I would, I would defer to the planning board on some of the specifics if there were. Pieces of this unless you've already had some conversation with the planning board about. The various proposals in here, you know, I, I personally would be comfortable having the planning board say, well. These, you know, here's, here's our take on some of these specific ideas and here's what we might. Recommend, here's what we recommend as things that are sort of a reasonable. Set of things to try to achieve over this period of time. I would be comfortable. Um, being guided by that along with the overall plan, which I think is excellent. So I don't personally feel the need because I don't, this is not. I, I'm not. Going to try to make myself an expert on all of the things that are in the production, the planning report, HPP. Um, I mean, that's why we had M A P C do it as an experienced body that does a lot of this, so. Um, but I do respect the expertise on the planning board and, and particularly with the town planner. I, again, I don't know. Whether you've Julie done your own, you know, review of this and given feedback yet or. But that would be, um, those would be the two groups that I would like to have, give us any. Uh, specific comments on this or recommendations and then I'd be ready to go.
Yeah, well, the planning board has a lot of work to do in the, because a lot of the action steps.
I know.
All along to the planning board, so indeed, um.
Are you saying that you would like to be the feedback on the planning board and Julie? And then that comes to the select board and we review it and then that's when we would. Do it during a sequence thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I, again, I personally wouldn't anticipate that we as a select board. Would then have a whole additional set of items that we either wanted to change or add to it or. Right? I mean, but that's my opinion, right? Because I don't think we need to be specialists in housing. In, but since we have.
I wasn't suggesting that.
Yeah.
But we still have the priority.
Right, but I'm looking to, yeah. I'd be looking for that to have a town planner and the.
I think what Ryan's saying is true and you know, we are in the process of. Learning to trust the daytime government more and absolutely, but you know, there's a cost component at the end.
Hmm.
And we are, at the, at the, at the end of the day, we have to somehow rank where the things we're going to take. And so however the process works and I agree with all that, I just want us to be mindful. Some general prioritization is really valuable as a framework.
Right.
And it goes back to my very first question, you know, and so rather than be labored now at nine thirty, but clarity about what is a reasonable objective for the town to do. Would be helpful from any source.
Okay, are any other comments from the select board on this? Or from the planning board or from the housing trust? I think we know how we're moving forward is to people feel like we're on a path here. Okay.
Thank you.
Good, um, well, thanks to everybody. Yeah, now do you want to, you need to close your meeting officially. And the.
And the housing, housing trust meeting is officially closed at nine thirty.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the planning board?
Do I hear a second? Thank you. This, uh, meeting of the planning board is hereby closed.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks you, uh, and again, thank you to M A P C, um. This is a lot of great work, uh, and it's really going to help us move forward, so. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And if we have questions, do we submit them to you, Kate, or to like? Where, where's the?
I would say that Ryan and, and Julie maybe other.
Julie's offered to serve as.
Yes, okay. Will be in close contact.
Excellent. This is a minor job here, Julie, that you get to take on. Boom. It's great.
If I, if I might just, um, add a couple of thoughts, uh, there is a section of the plan that looks at implementation in terms of priority and timeline. That may be really helpful in terms of prioritizing some things that you may want to, uh, explore, uh, in the near term, midterm and long term. And kind of how the recommendations relate to each other, the entities that would need to be involved in implementing. I would say that, you know, typically in a planning process like this, as a consultant, it would be very valuable to work with. An experienced town planner like Julie and that just wasn't possible because she wasn't, uh, on board when we were making the plan. And I think it would be great to coordinate with her, but I also want to be mindful of that, um, the, the committee that worked through the plan. Um, ultimately guided the process and they should be involved in those discussions as well.
Thank you. All right. Well, good night all and, and thank you. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is, um. Aubrey, are you online or are you, Ryan, are you going to be doing this about, uh, the preparation for the discussion with Representative Cataldo next? Next meeting?
She is, but if she doesn't pop on, I'm ready. She is, but if she doesn't pop on, I'm ready.
No, I'm, I'm here, sorry.
Hi, Aubrey.
Here. Hello, yes, so, um, I did assess, um. With, uh, current. Uh, board members, staff members, um, let me just pull that up real quick for you. Um, and what they are looking for, um, for input from, um, the representative. Um, so I did get some input from, uh, the chief, uh, Brian Sarrows. Uh, uh, for thanking him for the fire safety, uh, grants. Um, and also, um, looking into, um, resiliency with public safety buildings. Also supporting the state moving EMS from D P H and E O P S. Um, also, um, the, the bridge, um. On two twenty-five over the Concord River is a concern for him. So those are his top, uh, concerns. Um, also Joan Angersall, our C O H S director also, um, brought in some input that she'd like to, um. Have the legislator move forward with the attached bill that I have attached after this. Um, piloting a state property tax deferral program. Um, also, um, Sue Thomas, the environmental sustainability director had several different, um. Uh, concerns regarding restart sustainability as you can see here. Um, and seeing how it can, um, how he will be addressing. A lot of different, uh, issues, um, related to that. Um, and then in that vein, also Debbie Bentley, which is just from herself, not, um, representative of the E S C. She also had, um, questions for him about zero carbon renovation fund. Um, and also, um, a bill on embodied carbon in buildings. And then Lana Zamaro had some questions about, uh, financial incentives for decarbonization. So there's definitely a big theme with that. And then Ryan, if you wanted to also speak on, uh, what you would like to address with them.
Sure. Quickly, I serve on the Small Town Administrators Legislative Affairs Committee. We are. Meeting with our legislative liaison. So here it would be, it would be Simon's. This would be a way to introduce this legislative priority we're trying to push. Uh, Carlisle's been added to this mix as an island, small town in the middle of these larger municipalities. And all of these relate directly to, uh, to Carlisle, so providing funding and assistance to town clerks for elections. Uh, more roads money, rural factors will help us with, uh, school aid. Creating a municipal building assistance authority, which the chief referenced in his, in his as well, and then. Um, extending provisions to allow hybrid meetings like these and then also funding it.
Yeah. So I think this is a good list, uh, um. Does anyone here on the select board have, um. Uh, something in particular or, or broadly that they would like to include in. What we send to, um. Representative Cataldo's office, we're going to sort of prepare some remarks.
So I, I guess I'm not understanding that this is our opportunity to sort of petition the government to, to talk to the state representative and say. These are the priorities that we see from our town and we'd like you to be aware of. Is that the purpose of this?
Kind of a, it's sort of backing up a little bit. More towards the beginning. It's basically trying to establish a relationship with him. He, he, he's just been elected. Um, he's never served before representing Carlisle and so. We want just to have an opportunity to. Get our. Voices into the mix of the voices he's hearing from now and we, and we wanted to have some sense of, of what were some of the key. Areas, uh, of, you know, that, that people in town or particularly board people were interested in hearing him address.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I don't see this as a one-shot ability to, you know, influence legislation is the beginning. We, we haven't done so much of this, you know, in an organized way in the past, a little bit. We, I know we had, um. Um, Tammy Kovay come once, but I think this is an effort to get in on the very beginning of his term and to, um. Open a dialogue that we're going to hopefully continue, you know, rather than have it be just so. Maybe once every couple of years that you see your state rep.
Yeah, we, we were very supportive of him early, many of us. And he's from Concord, so you know, Carlisle is a close community to where he lives. So that's first of all, and, and he's a young, very energetic, if you've met him, very earnest guy. So part of it is just he will present, I think, his. What his vision is, what does he want to accomplish, what does he stand for? And he stands for a lot of the issues that I think are already. Encapsulated in this, uh, what we said. So we're going to be very similar. So he'll say some things and I think it's great. The bullet points are pretty good if we can reduce them. You know, and give them to an advance so he can also be responsive to what people said. But yeah, absolutely agree with Barney. It's a beginning. We'd like to be, we'd like to check in with him regularly. And you know, the more he understands about Carlisle, the more he will be effective. As a representative of our interests, so. That's it.
I was just curious how you prioritize. That was your question earlier with the, you know.
Well, I don't think prioritization is necessary here. I think that what, in my mind, since I sort of set it up with him.
Yeah.
I think he gets a period, it's fifty minutes, I think we put in there, five zero minutes or something like that. So we give him. Fifteen or twenty minutes to present. His piece, he'll have some package thing he wants to say. We take ten or fifteen minutes to. Give him a, or he can respond to specific questions. He'll get them in advance after we this meeting. And then we can have a back and forth. It's still, you know, it's a meet and greet.
Yeah, and just knowing him, uh, he's going to be very interested in getting input. He's not going to get up and speak for, you know, forty minutes. He's going to try to do a brief, you know, here's. Address these, here's what I'm, you know, what's on my plate right now and what I'm looking at from what you sent me. I want to address some of the key things you've sent me. And he'll do that and then want to have dialogue back and forth about things we want to talk about.
Right.
Yeah. Um, my one suggestion on this is that, and I'm happy to take a crack at it or maybe work with Aubrey, you on it or how, is that. Rather than send him these, right, notes from individuals. We go through and pull out the common themes and put that before him and then something that's super specific. He could address separately, you know, um, to the.
I think we can.
Right, and so. Right.
Kind of a priority order, so that we move at a time. These are the highest priority ones and the lower ones, we did it the next time.
That, that's what I was asking is, or how you're going to have to prioritize somehow of what you want to tell people and how you want to portray it. So. You know, and I, I noticed there wasn't anything on like conservation or some of the other, you know, we have five key components of our master plan and I don't think all of them were represented in this.
That's why this is our opportunity as a board.
Yeah.
I mean, we didn't, you know, people could have the app, we all have the option to respond, you know, to, to Aubrey's request.
Yeah.
So, but this is now our chance as a group. Yeah, we all got the notice from her.
Oh, okay.
But anyway, that's okay. But that's what, if we take just three minutes tonight for people to say like. If you want to make sure we have all five of the. Elements in the master plan, some of our caring community is obviously harder to. But if there's something specific under connectivity and access or, you know, sustainability or, um, fiscal.
I think this, this, I think.
I thought for all of these people, great, going for priority, I would just put Ryan's first. And then, and then it would just flow right down to the rest of them.
Carlisle's.
Uh, Ryan likes that.
For Carlo.
Yeah.
Not for Ryan's.
Right. Um, but anything. That Travis or Kate, you.
Well, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just looking, you know, in, in April of twenty-two, I already asked him about the, uh, pending legislation for the. Uh, tax deferral, so I don't, you know, he already knows that I think we're interested in that, so that, but.
And that's been, that's covered under, with Joan.
Yeah, and, and I think, and I still think it's important that, you know, he just know that we're interested in him not losing sight of that.
Right.
Uh, but the other thing, and I've talked about hit to this. About this to him in the past as well. Is the idea of, um, regionalization and the state, um, facilitating regionalization. Uh, so for instance. Uh, when they do this stupid, you know, three A where, uh. That it's not one size fits all and that a couple of towns could get together and say, okay, look, you know. We need to have so many acres of open space and we need to have so many units. You've got the units, we've got the space, let's get together and you know. Uh, we're done, right? Or that sort of thing. So, but I don't know how you, you do that exactly, you know. But again, if we had more legislators that were interested in that concept to keep their eye open. And to, um, and, and a lot of this is due again to the, also to the unfunded mandate. And, and to, you know, um, so as I said. I've already had a number of lengthy conversations.
Regionalization from two ends, right? One is the one we've been talking about, which is the. Um, you know, maybe there's collaboration or there's, uh. Merging of some functions or help with that. But the other one which you alluded to, which is really important when you talk about forty B. And possibly, uh, in my opinion, which is. Um, this whole, uh, school, what's the thing, uh, the, um, the one we have with Boston.
Uh, Metco.
Metco. Like, why is it so limited? Why can't we be looking at Lowell? Why can't we be doing things right in our neighborhood? And there's no machine, there's no mechanism and that would be a huge.
Yeah.
Benefit to rich towns like us in close proximity to needy underserved towns. That's a partnership that I could really see helping and associate.
And, uh, well, and the other thing is that a lot of the mandates are mutually exclusive, so. Um, the housing, for instance, we'd have to cut a lot of trees, which has been not sustainable and not in, at, you know. So it's like, but you're making us do both, you know, so like choose one or the other or let us choose one of the other, you know, just kind of.
I agree.
Yeah, okay. I've added that to the list. I'm sure Aubrey has to, um, and we'll, uh. Figure out how to. Put this together and recognizing that, that we may not get through everything and we'll just make sure we have enough time to.
And, well.
To give him a, I mean, we should give him the bullet point first.
Right.
And the, um, police chief, Tom, didn't, did he answer and give anything because. And my email also, uh, was a little concerned about this, um, the post, the new, um, officer. Police officer, um, blah, 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 blah.
What does that acronym stand for?
Yeah.
Talking about.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's another one of those possibly unfunded mandates.
Right.
And it's, you know, being done by civilians and there's no police. Uh, representation in that committee and.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. All right, well, I think we've got a lot to, um, ask him, to send to him and we'll try to organize it, um. Before we send it out and then, um. We'll have a conversation with him next time and we can plan for the, you know, continuing conversations beyond that.
Is he coming in person?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, he had, just had a little baby, so we should all ask.
As I put him first.
Yeah. Okay, so let's move on to the, uh, town administrators' report.
Okay, I will be as.
Mister McLean.
Succinct as possible for the board. So I found out about this, uh, Tracker Ward. Just wanted to recognize Saul and Lee. Recent, uh, completers of the Tracker Ward, which is fifty-five miles of Carlisle trails. I put some links to this. I think unique initiative here highlighting the beautiful space in Carlisle. So wanted to call that out and, um. The board has me long enough, maybe I'll try it. Maybe I'll try and get all fifty-five. That would be fun. The Clark Room install in this room, this is the I T. Our friend in the back will be very appreciative of this, but we're looking to get that the first week in February. That'll include some of the screens and then we'll put the decorations back up. So this room looks, uh, befitting of the way, the way it once did.
Are we going to get a couple more microphones just, uh, out of curiosity so that I don't have to keep on hopping up and learning people mine?
Yes.
But an extra for when somebody's coming up to speed.
Yeah, that would be great.
That'd be great, yeah.
The equipment will be housed here. So one of the problems, just briefly, is that they have to bring it here, set it up, so count it and all that. And they don't necessarily know who's going to be here. So when it's all just housed here, it'll work. Some of the technological improvements at Town Hall, I know I T is a focus of this board. We are evaluating some potential telephone solutions, went to FinCom with that and also working with the school committee. Um, working on upgrading some of our internal security measures to include multi-factor authentication and, and other protections for our I T infrastructure. Aubrey's working on SharePoint sites for all of our internal teams. We should be ready to have a select board solution as well, which would solve some of these documented versioning problems. And then, um. Jen's working through our basic licensing and email assignments, removal accounts and make sure we have. A current inventory. Once that's done, we should, uh, inventory the hardware. And then have all of that for the board to understand, um, and then implement accountability procedures for signing it out, having it and making sure we know where everything is.
Quick question, the, um. Evaluating potential telephone solutions. Is this being done just for Town Hall or is this going to be, uh. Include what the school is looking at as well? Are we doing this in a coordinated way?
So we, uh, the Scott at the schools, the I T director at the schools, uh, found a cloud-based solution, I think works well for non-public safety entities. So this would be library. Town Hall and, uh, the schools would all be connected.
Great.
Uh, which is good and it, it's. It, with some small investments in phones, which is small dollars compared to other I, uh, infrastructure. It is actually a cost reduction for Town Hall and a little bit of a cost increase for the school, so it's a pretty good solution. I'm not ready to really roll it out, but I will make sure the board is on board before we.
Ryan, one co- question on. The, uh, inventory I T equipment accountability, do, do we have a policy, like a use policy for. Using, you know, company asset, town assets like computers?
Not, not one that I'd be proud of, so we need to build it. Uh, records, this is a continuing issue, not only for compliance, but also space. Just want to quickly shout out Peggy's work here. So everybody manages their own current records pretty well. That's, that's not a problem. It's, it's old records and. What I would call orphan records are those that aren't maintained by staff. Peggy's been doing that work and deserves credit for continuing to beat the drum. Um, I've joined with her and we are an unstoppable team. The, working with each department to understand how we can store these documents, organize them and reduce the, the file load, eliminate some of the cabinets, organize and archive boxes and eventually. Uh, have our active files organized as well. So what this would do is complete that first stage of the records project and then set us up for digitizing when we have the. The staff and the will to do that. So this would get us to more than halfway. Create some space in Town Hall and then allow us to do a reorganization of personnel in a way that, um, makes sense. Uh, Jen's taking a lead on this project, uh, working on moving I T and other things that, that go into. This various reorganization. Some of the H R updates, the board is tracking, uh. Collecting resumes for the assessing assistant, the foreman and the police chief. All of those are coming to a head, police chief in March. We have the chair here if you want to need additional information. Uh, the foreman position is internal until the end of this week and then we are going to start sending recommendations to the board of assessors for the assessing assistant. They voted today to have us provide them with recommendations to speed up that process. Given some of the issues you heard tonight, we need staff in that department, uh, terribly. Some H R platforms we're looking at would help us, um, streamline accruals, get more, um. Information for the board in terms of your H R questions and some of the budget questions. So we'll have a recommendation for that soon. And then Aubrey attached, uh, military leave policy. I should mention that this is Aubrey's part of the report. Um, updated in military leave policy. That she would like to have the board consider and she included in this packet for you to review. Uh, the new newsletter will come out this week, I believe tomorrow. And then, uh, Tara Bicknell, our talented assistant treasurer collector, received an excellent opportunity in Andover. Her last day will be February third. So we've already advertised this position and am working with Kim to cover the office while. Uh, we hire someone for Tara's position. So thank you Tara for her service. We will make sure that. Uh, she understands how much we recognize her work as she moves on in her career.
Just one quick thing, I do not think the, um. Policy got into the packet.
Then you will have it tomorrow.
Uh, we, we'll just have to, yeah. Great.
Yeah, just scroll through, so.
So we met with, um, well, I was there while the finance committee met with departments. Last week, we had the, the two marathon sessions. Those were, were great. Departments and committees and boards came in and presented their budgets. And the finance committee asked great questions and you could tell this is a, a well-run process. I provided a link to the most current budget updates and the finance committee has scheduled two meetings to go over the deliberation part of, of what they heard and, and what they want to prioritize. As we did talk about in executive session today, one thing they are looking for is a rec- recommendation on. The wage and class plan. Kelly and I finished our analysis and provided that. To you for your consideration. Uh, I am asking, so our. Community Choice Aggregation, C C A contract expires soon. We need to begin negotiating. This is, uh. Bob Zog, who, who is keeping us compliant and up to date on this as part of our. We need to begin negotiating. This is uh Bob Zog, who who is keeping us compliant and up to date on this as part of our ESC. Uh, Sue Thomas has also been helping me understand what needs to be completed here. So what I'm asking for from the board is um the ability to create a working group to address and provide recommendations to this body on that contract. So that working group would include Bob, Sue, myself, and then anyone else we need as a technical expert. So this would be to provide you a recommendation. Uh, it does not need a new committee if you're okay with that structure.
Is is this the the colonial uh? Okay, uh, so are you looking for a new aggregator or are you just negotiating, finding out from? I'm just wondering what this the committee is gonna be doing.
Uh, probably understanding both.
Oh.
So um, do we?
Is it worth it to switch or?
Got it. Okay, all right.
Uh, shall we do a quick? Um, do you feel like we need a motion to um? I mean, I think it's your purview to.
No, it's his group, no.
So.
It's his working group.
Forming us is fine.
I think we just need the direction to do it.
Yeah, we don't need a vote. Right, so that's great.
For it.
Yeah.
Then we will provide you with a recommendation. I look forward to the work. Uh, the Carlisle Garden Club requests use of the Town Common. These are action items for your consideration for their garden tour on Friday, June ninth, twenty twenty-three and Saturday, June tenth. They uh received approval from the FRS and I provided a link to their very nice website.
So we need a motion. I don't see one in the packet. So we need a motion to.
I move that we approve the use of Town Common. Uh, the Carlisle Garden Club's uh use of the Town Common. The common for their garden tour on Friday, June ninth, twenty twenty-three. And on Saturday, June tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. I seconded it. Second Kate seconded any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that's approved.
And then I'm sure the board is familiar with this. The Carlisle Old Home Day Committee, which we plan on going to this year. Recommends June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth as the dates for this year's event. This was originated in nineteen twelve and according to Ruth Wilken Hollis's record, it was a beautiful summer day with the town flag flying on the common. And the soldiers monument in the square decorated with flags and flowers. I hope it's the same. Uh, the permissions request including the use of town center, spalding field, portions of the schools and grounds, the fire station, town hall and the roads and byways necessary. To complete the annual foot races.
We have a motion.
I move that we approve uh June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. As uh Carlisle's Old Home Day.
I'm sorry, maybe it's a little.
I'm sorry. Uh, I move that we uh, we uh designate June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth as uh. Uh, of twenty twenty-three as uh for Carlisle's Old Home Day. Um, and that uh, uh, the Old Home Day Committee um. Uh, has the use of the town center, spalding field and portion of the school and grounds with the school's permission. The fire station, town hall and the rows and by- byways necessary to complete the annual foot races.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need this to be contingent on the police um, you know, for the byways and annual foot?
If provided they work with the police and fire on any necessary safety concerns.
Can we add a stipulation that the town administrator has to do his time in the dunk tank?
Jim O'Shea already informed me of that.
Yeah. Alright, may I have a second?
I did second.
Oh, sorry. That's right. Alrighty, uh, let's do this by uh voice vote, please. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the motion carries. Ray, here goes, Old Home Day is now in the calendar.
I'll go in the dunk tank.
Alright.
I'm not afraid of it. Uh, it's quick staff recognition. So Kelly, our talented town accountant, has been doing multiple projects. Trying to ready analysis for the budget for wages for all of the initiatives that that Aubrey's working on with HR. Um, this is above and beyond what's required. She would, she would say that it's part of her job, but she's been working overtime. Um, and her ability to organize data. And help us try and clean things up is is going to pay dividends for years to come. So she is uh. Worthy of recognition and and praise. And then James Hall stepped into our DPW foreman role with almost no notice during the busiest time of the year. Which is the uh, the winter months during Gary's absence from the superintendent role. He uh has provided a a pretty seamless transition, continuing DPW services and has definitely connected with Town Hall staff. To make sure that we're not missing anything uh to, while we try to fill Gary's very, very large shoes. So he communicates well. With public safety and us and uh he helps with additional projects when we ask him. So definitely worthy of recognition. It's a quick note from me. Um, normally a a guardsman goes for two to three weeks to to training every year. I'm transitioning to a new role at state headquarters, which provides for year-round annual training. So I'll be taking days here and there rather than that chunk. Which I think does help the town, but it does mean that I'll occasionally be out for military service to meet that requirement. Um, one anomaly is this month I'll be missing the next three Fridays, one for professional development and two for. For this military training. Just wanna make sure the board's aware of that schedule and and knows it ahead of time. So it's a good thing, but it does come with the those extra days that that needs to be known. Uh, I attached some dates to include some of those military trainings and um other professional developments in the calendar section. And then I will call it up on the screen, but the next item is your draft agenda, Madam Chair.
Well, before you get to that, can I ask about the dates? And the February thirteenth in particular, why would that, why can we not meet on the Tuesday? Is there some reason?
Valentine's Day.
Well, it's not like it's Martin Luther King Day.
Valentine's Day.
This is why, really?
Remember we.
I wanna stay there.
Here, yeah, that that we would try to go with either the Monday or the Wednesday. What? You don't remember us talking about.
I remember us talking about either Monday or Wednesday, but not why. I thought there was some.
No.
Reason why we would. From our. Okay.
Some spouses complain of being select board widows. I won't say who, but I've heard that term.
And uh, just on that, uh, but let's clarify, it's, we are going with Monday, the thirteenth, correct? This says, or hold it on the fifteenth. Uh, can everybody here make the meeting on the thirteenth?
Well, and we, that's a joint meeting with the FinCom and that's the regular night, which is another.
It's a much better reason to put it on the.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, it is already po- posted and I think Lynn has agreed that that works for her.
Yes, she has.
Okay, so.
But that that thirteen. Works okay for the board members here?
As far as I know, I have a work commitment coming up and it may, that we'll just deal with it as.
Okay.
Yeah, February twenty-eighth doesn't work for me, but the thirteenth does.
Okay. Yeah, um, oh, the the Tuesday on of the twenty-eighth doesn't work for you. Okay.
We don't have to move it on my account, I guess.
Okay, yeah. Alright, so let's take a um.
And on the sixth, do we know what time the FinCom is meeting? Is that a seven? Okay, it wasn't a special meeting or anything.
No, it's the regular meeting.
Yeah, it's the next three.
Before we do the, uh, do you wanna save the uh designer selection policy till after we review the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we've got the draft agenda for the thirty-first and we know already we need to add the, hopefully the approval of the order. The dog uh, the amendment. Um, and uh. So if you wanna just quickly take a look here, so we're um, are we still on track then to have um? The proposal, Ryan, from Jack Trost and yourself about the uh master plan and then.
Interestingly, the um feedback that that we've gotten about the the master plan. So we sent it to each committee with recommendations from us as to who should champion each issue. The feedback that came back is is worth looking at. So Julie and I were talking about this today and we'll loop Jack into this as well, that um, we may need to consider. Having a discussion about about the feedback that came back to inform what would be next and invite the master steering plan committee and Julie to. To to kind of go over it. But it it's more than just, you know, I want this or I want that. There's some substantive notes that the board should consider. Before you head into this implementation phase.
So.
So maybe we should just change, still have this on the agenda, but change what the discussion will be.
Yes.
Right, okay.
And then a subsequent meeting would catch implementation.
I believe so.
Yeah.
The the discussion will help us understand the timeline too.
Alright. Uh, and then the CPC is prepared to come in for, you know, similar to the um. COAHS did it tonight. Theirs will be more limited, obviously, because what they really, I mean, that's, they can look at their. Charge and then the master plan piece and how we can help them. But specifically, they'll be talking with us about the three. Um, proposals they've received for CPA funding too for this uh town meeting. Um, and then we have the follow-up meeting with the Environmental Sustainability Committee, which we're talking about as a joint meeting as well. Um. And I'm trying to remember specifically what that.
Well, we'd ask for prioritization.
I I think that's gonna be a very important meeting. I was at also at the uh FinCom hearings and they did come and ask for a budget. And I think actually more properly, they should have come to us to ask for budget first because they're our committee and. Or or we should have talked about.
They did in the context of forty.
Plan to us.
Okay, well, I don't remember us.
No, we didn't, we didn't sign off.
We didn't sign off on it. So and then suddenly they're appearing in front of the FinCom with a budget.
Well, that, yeah, that may have.
Should say, yeah, it makes sense to go to them, but I'd.
We did, well.
Right, well, you know.
Kate's right. I mean, we, we, at least I speak for myself, I didn't think through that piece about the budget. We said, there's a lot of stuff here. Come back with your priorities. And because of scheduling, we, because originally they were gonna come, I think in November or something. It's gotten pushed and we didn't, okay, that on us, we didn't stop this other thing that's on autopilot that got them in front of.
But in that con- same context, I think there's a lot of committees that need a budget or support. Uh, there's some committees that we probably should, you know, um, eliminate. And I think it would be nice to do this as a whole, again, a piece to see. You know, what is our budget for committee support and how do we allocate that to our committees or, you know? As I said, you know, at one point when I discovered that historic commission had a, you know.
An admin.
Had, and then there was a bunch of other committees that had zippity-doodah who are spending a lot of money. Like, for instance, MFC, it's like, well, how did that ever happen? You know, so so that we can just kind of get it all in one.
I think it's good, you know, lesson learned or, you know, process improvement for the next cycle that we. Be more cognizant of the budget timeline when we make these committee. I mean, we've tried, this year we did introduce forward planning on our agendas, right? So we do a lot, we spent a lot of time. Three of us and obviously spent a lot of time on what agenda is coming when, but we haven't, I haven't. Really mirrored this FinCom hearing schedule with those kind of things. So that should be part of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, anyway, so they're on that out there. Okay.
And then the, so those, those are the key things that are on here. Yeah, um. It just, I know it's getting late, but I wanted to just throw out one broad comment here, which is, I'd really like to see us as a board. Schedule time relatively soon to do some of the bigger picture stuff.
Yeah, maybe even if it's a special meeting.
Committees and, right, we're, that's the kind of stuff that I think it's hard to do in this kind of meeting. So maybe something where that and also looking at the um, sort of the relationship between town staff and boards. Now that we're moving into, you know, having some more town resources, um, some of that long-term, you know, budget planning. So anyway. I'm happy to, maybe Ryan and David and I can talk about what might make sense and then check in with the board about when we could do that.
March, March and April.
Yeah.
The moment are thinner in terms of things we have to do because.
Yeah.
The the warrant, the uh town meeting-driven items start to kind of get baked in. So that's.
Yeah, but I think our goal setting, you know, we do a big goal setting in the beginning. I think we need to do it quarterly. And and we might even need to have a whole meeting just for that, no other business and we just, so that we can talk about those bigger picture things and get into them where we need to. Discuss, you know, give. Where are we on our current goals? What kept us from achieving them? Which ones can we check off? What support do we need? Which one should we, you know, gee, it seemed like a good idea at the time, but let's get rid of it, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, good. Okay, uh, so the designer selection policy. Mister McLean.
Excellent. So this came about because we are attempting to select a designer for for the MFC. So this would be a. What they call, what the state calls a house doctor, a designer or a group of designers that could meet the needs of the of the municipal facilities committee. In terms of getting ahead of projects. So what this might look like is they could empower the designer or whatever designer selected. N- negotiate and then start on the design of or the. Whatever is needed to get the town hall roofed on while they're working on on the library project. So this would be a dedicated engineering resource. So in. Preparing this RFP, council advised us that our uh two thousand eight designer selection policy needs to be updated and recommended that we do this first. Before we do that, that RFP. Um, we've seen this a couple of times and and we sent it to you for comments. And uh, we've incorporated those comments in this draft. Essentially, the the main change here is that the select board is empowering me to do the. Uh, procurement to create a designer selection committee that could be person or persons that help us make that decision. So if you think small items, you know, we don't need a large group, but um, big design items like the town hall, we would want more input. Anything that's brand new, like a public safety facility would be outside of this. This would still apply, but um, you would create full committees for that. So. It's a little bit different. And then ninety-five percent of this is driven by the state statute and what is required. So town council has reviewed this and uh you've reviewed it and I'm looking for your support.
I move that we approve the designer selection policy as presented tonight.
Second. Any discussion?
I sent you one minor typo late today, Ryan. It's not substantive, it's just the reference.
And including Dave Modell's minor typo adjustment that he sent in today.
Dave and I will get it done.
Okay, any other comments?
I think it's, Travis, I think it's great because it takes a lot of the pressure off of these boards, especially the.
Absolutely.
To, you know, start to.
Why did we think of this years ago?
Is there any kind of threshold though for like having other input other than your procurement skills?
Yeah, I mean, if I do it wrong, you fire me. That's that's number one, but um, really, you're driving this. It's just authorizing me to do it. So the MFC would say, go procure this for us or negotiate it.
Right.
And then like anything else, um, anyone in my position who's any good would then bring you, so this is what I'm thinking. Do you approve it?
Right.
Um, nobody that's any good is gonna just go do it. Alright, so this is just kind of directing that.
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, then um, let's uh vote on this, please. Uh, voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, passes unanimously. Great, we have uh, uh, really just the.
Most of the other ones.
Which, oh, gosh, yeah, there's another one, isn't there?
So this is.
For our information.
This is getting ahead of a potential policy discussion that you might have at this workshop. So these are policies that are being discussed by the finance team and then they'll go to the finance committee and then you. So just giving them to you ahead of time.
Oh, so, okay. Financial reserves and overlay. Okay, riveting.
And you highlighted key things.
Yes. And there'll be more recommendations, but this is the first look for you.
First iteration. Okay, great. Um, uh, we did the deed transfer and um.
Just the exact reports.
The liaison reports, right. So does anybody have a report they, um, something they wanna. Provide to us tonight. Alright, and uh unless there are any questions about the warrants, I think we.
So am I the only one going to MMA on Friday? Uh, well, I know you're gonna be there. Actually, did everybody know that Ryan's on one of the the panels for?
No, what are you presenting?
Regionalization.
Uh, shared services, yes.
Well, there you go. Look at, we're already implementing the housing.
That's right.
Okay. Um, good.
Just a little recognition.
And is uh anyone beside, I think, David, are you going to the chairs meeting in Concord tomorrow morning? Right, eight AM, so am I.
Right now.
This is Concord, you know, issued an invitation, any of us that wanna join their chairs meetings in um. This is a first invitation to us and we can see, we'll report back what we think is, what's valuable. Okay. Uh, then unless, uh, yeah, man, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, second. Alright, excellent. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Alright, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.